Not with my page is just doing this, man, like this is-
So is it on Mickey?
Yeah, my Mickey.
No internet connection. That's interesting.
Yeah, I got, if you can share, I gotta share it to eighteen, you can share it to eighteen, I can't-
Uh, I can't share it to eighteen, so I have to share it for you, it's a personal blog.
Nah, shit, shit, Wendy, I can't share it to her.
That's cool, I'll have Wintis share it, uh, from the eighteen.
Yeah, I even was trying to go live from YouTube, and they won't let me go live from YouTube.
Damn.
Yeah. She started telling me I can, my phone keep kicking me out of it, and I'm telling her- Yeah. Ten eighteen.
One zero. I've been hanging around with Brits too much, man.
Plus, they tell me we're supposed to be deleting pages in twenty-four hours.
What, who's getting deleted?
Eighteen.
Why? So what are we gonna do?
We go live on YouTube, what you mean when we gonna do? Shit, that's just one page.
Did they say what the infraction was?
They said copyright infringement or some shit.
Oh, that's what it is. That's comedy council. I've never heard comedy council before.
I still got access to this, like I said. Yeah, I think they just shut my phone down, my eighteen, but they do not, they make me do nothing.
Would you like me to make a post later about, uh, them taking you down?
Mm-hmm.
Because people are gonna be looking for it on Facebook.
Soon as Wintis get here, maybe I told her to come over to my, to my page.
VHS two. Croatian made, and the Monstrum site is actually Chinese made, but it works well on the phone. I'm not here. People are gonna feel intimidated, I don't want them to feel intimidated. But some people just don't feel comfortable running ones, I, I understand. And I don't wanna drive people out of here. They have every right to see this, and I can go home and watch it all on Mickey. So what you got to say tonight? It's best if you give yourself a little voice, because if you were watching at the beginning, that is a horrible opportunity. Bullet point, say the point, give an example there and up, next bullet point, example there and up. Until you get stuck in your head, that's how I do it now, and I just do it mentally. To start out, I always had these pieces of paper right in front of me, that was what I was trying to read off of, then Wintis would go on a site, and I'm like- Yeah. And it looks like we're doing YouTube exclusive from now on.
Ooh.
Oh, is this thing on YouTube?
Not this part yet. We, uh, we need to reach that thousand view. Or, sorry, thousand subscriber word.
See, I might have YouTube on my TV, and I could hear so much.
Oh yeah, I sit in my truck, and I Bluetooth my phone to my truck.
But hey, we have all these neighbors here.
There we go. Oh, on this, yeah, the bad Mr. Davis. The one who got tore up in the comments section last night. I don't know what Rich is. Yeah. Rich is, I don't know. He's got H N R, he's making money. At the first I seen those, but it's gonna be something. He looks like a chunky thirty-year-old, but you know, whatever. I mean, if you're person, man.
I have to walk to that metal detector. Alright. Oh, I travel, he didn't have no problem coming in with it.
On Facebook?
Yeah. Oh, why you steady asking me that one on my Facebook? What part of you didn't get it, I told you what they do. And I couldn't do it from eighteen, I'm locked out of that. I had to go run on my own page. I'm live from my page, hey, they wouldn't let me do it. Wouldn't let me do it.
Nah, I'm doing it for eighteen, I'm picking me, us win.
Nah, 'cause they wouldn't let my, uh, my phone, they wouldn't let me get in eighteen. Every time I was trying to go live, they keep kicking me out. I was trying to, uh, go live, they wouldn't let me go, so I just came from my, uh, regular page.
Alright, I'm gonna go back, send the pack.
I didn't have to sign in, I keep telling you that, they didn't let me do it. I don't know why you steady thinking you can go to your phone and do it, they wouldn't let me do it, motherfucker. When I just tried to do it. They keep saying you ain't got enough to do it. I just went through it, that's what I've been sitting up here, even at the park. So wouldn't let me do it. Well, you can, they won't let me do it. I just was sitting there trying to do it, they kept cutting me off. And it gave me alerts, said the page gonna be deleted in twenty-four hours. Yeah, they spamming the hell out of me, they don't let me do nothing. But you can't share my live to eighteen, I can't do no sharing with you. I'm uploading. Back to Facebook, but they won't let me get up in here and do nothing. Paul, you got an open spot over there?
On the court, I do, I do, I do, actually, I brought this one for you, so you can run it back.
I can't, they wouldn't, they let me do it. I've been up here, sitting up here crying.
Oh, you kept going live.
Yeah, 'cause it kept kicking me out. I gotta go back, I gotta go delete all of them. Yeah, it keep kicking me out every time, they wouldn't let the phone turn or nothing. Soon as I go to my regular page, I got full access to my regular pages. I'm like, man, how they done got control of this page, I'm just- I can't win for losing with these sap suckers. Do not destroy her. Scared to even touch that. Yeah, shit, I can't, I don't know how they done get to this level.
Oh, okay, 'cause that's your personal thing.
Yeah. I ain't got no access to, to my eight-one-zero pages. That's crazy, that, that's been like that. They keep, I can't share it to them. I'm trying to figure out how they done got a hold of this page like this, and just zap it.
I caught you, boy.
Cool. Hey, how you doing? That's what I'm trying to tell you. I don't know how my phone-
But I added the followers, and I added-
I was like killing it until I met y'all, honest to heart, for trying to take my page away. I was, yeah, you live from Paul, I think you in on it.
You think I'm in on it?
Yeah, I think you in on it. I didn't have these many problems. Till they start saying I was sitting up here with you, I'm getting called everything but the child of God. I see. Man, you not, shouldn't have been, you didn't get in here like that. First of all. You couldn't get in there.
Trevor back there, Kendall with the ops, we need to fire him. Fire him, boss. He back there talking at, um, TV, TV five. You gotta hit the go fire right there.
Did you put it in here?
I couldn't, they won't let me get to the car. Really dead from the back of the car, yeah. You don't sit down, you one of them people, don't bother to sit down. No, you don't. Ain't nobody promised nobody nothing. They just sitting up there, nobody promised nobody nothing. No, we didn't, no, we didn't, no, we didn't. Man, you don't try to BS with it, I ain't gonna do it. I don't know what it is, I, I just cut it in my computer. The call, hey. It's in, it's in my, uh, it's in my computer. It said dictators. Yeah.
Dictators.
Dictators, uh. He's already popping up, it's a little bit. I'm finna show you the thing. They wouldn't let me do it in eighteen, I'm gonna show you my, my brush that I, I was trying to go to YouTube, I was shooting a video. We got to the plug, it said, I can't even live, I can't even live. Only thing was I didn't get to talk. And if you see the, uh, when you add your voice, which thing, you see they talking about three, uh-
It is five o'clock on Wednesday, October eighteenth, and I hereby call this meeting of the Plankton Committee. Plankton City Council's order room, of the, please. Roll call, excuse me. Excuse me. There are five members present. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. There's a motion, if, if, would you like to make a motion, because I will not order it there, I will order it at, at the end, but I won't go over to the beginning. Okay, I will not order that without objection. I will order it if, alright, I will order it under the special orders discussion lines without objection, if that's your wish. Okay. Is there any other changes to the, to the agenda? Um, the administration would like resolution two-three-zero-three-two-four, I will order so without objection. Then there's the Cedar Street Reservoir Home Station Rehabilitation, that is to be paid with Eagle Grant, which we have not accepted yet. So we can't spend money without accepting, right? Okay, so that will not be dropped without objection. I was going to add that on without, without objection, so we can have, we'll add that without objection. Um, add on resolution, that's add on resolution number one. So, Mr. Mays, would you like to make a motion, um, to change the discussion about the metal detector? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to have a discussion item regarding the metal detectors either before public speaking or after council response, or- It's a new and properly seconded to have a, um, discussion item. I've been, I've got to get on these, sir. Can you write this down, please? Seeing how we're gonna discuss it now, we might as well go ahead, is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, ma'am.
And, Mr. Mays?
Attorney Kim. Through you to attorney Kim, I see you present, um, chambers, can you come forward?
Attorney Kim?
Attorney Kim, would you advise me to discuss the matter of metal detector outside council chambers?
No discussion.
Any discussion, it's a metal detector out there, you have people you are officers, it's a mayor, anybody has discussions with you with your officer about it?
I've had discussions with many people about the metal detector.
Baker Brown?
I've had discussions with many people about metal detector.
I'm talking about this, I'm not talking about many metal detectors, I'm talking about this one.
Yes, I've had a bit of discussions with many people about the metal detector.
Okay, but that was my question, I'm talking, I'm asking you about this one.
Right. Repeat what I said, I've had discussions with many people about-
Who did you have discussions with about this one? On this council and the administration.
That is essentially asking me to disclose specific stations.
Oh, I'm not asking you to disclose, because I'm a pleader and investigator, you insist you wanna come up here and play the advocate. And I don't play advocate for you, for order for this report. So you talking real smart right now, I'm gonna see what I can get there. Um, through you, ma'am, to have this grant, you have something?
Um, yes, I did speak with Attorney Kim regarding the metal detector, and the gallery of it, being placed, can we enforce it, not enforce it? So I did have a conversation with issue of legal opinion, if I continue to call about the metal detector.
Did you issue a legal opinion, did you?
We had a verbal, I don't, it would have been same from over at the county in regards to can be open carry, then also, um, carrying is still up, and can be, can we enforce?
Of some folks that open carry permits, through you, ma'am, to have the chief of police, can you come forward? Attorney Kim, we ain't got time for you to talk smart, and boy answers the question, I don't- Propose a resolution to remove you for, for cost, that's what's gonna happen with you. Um, I don't, without win lose or draw, there's a resolution, I'm gonna request your office to do to remove you for cost. Because you've been issuing warrants politically, you playing games politically with this legislative branch, and I'm not down with that. Through you, ma'am, to have the decision, please. Chief Green, who did you have a conversation with concerning this metal detector, the mayor's administration and law on the council?
The mayor's administration.
Okay, and who made it, did you have?
I had discussion with Mayor Neil E and- And also Bill Kim.
And I'm also aware of a warrant that was issued, um, you can correct me if I'm wrong about an incident in the city council chambers. You familiar with that?
You have misdemeanor warrant?
You have misdemeanor warrant?
For who?
Who?
Yes, Allen.
Last name Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, and that warrant was issued by the city attorney's office, this city attorney?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding, how it works too. Um, my concern is this, uh, Chief Green, I request this a issue of a warrant, that means state police requested an issue of a warrant when Murdoch was offered to be same misdemeanor that you want. This city attorney's office would issue a warrant, uh, do you remember those incidents? Any part of?
Part of, yes.
Okay, I remember it well, because I'm retired after. This po, this politics between the police department and the city attorney's office, and the mayor's office, in this council chambers, I'm not gonna have it. Now, I'm just told the city attorney, I'm gonna present a resolution to try to remove him for cost. You would be next on my list. If I find out that the mayor, the chief of police, and the city attorney is playing politics with this legislative branch, win, lose, or draw, we'll all make headlines. Because this administration, you remember the incident when five or six police came to the dome? And, 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 and wanted to put both out? Ed Taylor was it about, you remember that?
I remember it, I remember it very well.
Um, time-wise. What, we got two rounds of what?
Two rounds of five minutes.
Okay, I'll be back with you.
Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Um, Chief Green, before it's out, I have to walk all the way back. Good evening, um, I could have a touch on that with the metal detectors in regards to, I know we are having, were you asked about best location to have metal detectors?
I wasn't known.
Okay. So, if you were to advise within, because you are our department chief of police, ideally would-
So if you were to advise within, because you are our department's chief of police, ideally what would've been the best place, you can talk about the safety of residents?
What a point of access to, maybe the point of access would be this front door or the lobby downstairs. There are different points of access downstairs.
And I agree, and I, for me, it's not that we have a metal detector, it is the point of access, which we should be making sure, for me, all residents are safe. Every resident comes through the front door. Your office has been doing a great job, the police, they've done a great job making sure keeping people safe. So we take one incident, and that's not, it was two incident. We have the first person, it was Jasmine, you were here, I know you weren't here in council chambers that night when she was hit by someone. And we had one that was a photo, where it was taken with a cell phone, where someone, she did not lose contact, according, and there were witnesses. There is a witness who actually saw it, and I don't think she knows this, and this is really, I feel publicly wanna make it difficult for your department. This person stated, which is why we have this metal detector, that Officer Metcalf was at the back, the person got up in the bathroom, this other person was taking pictures. The pictures were being taken, they had of this person in this person's face, they asked this person to stop, that person didn't stop, they went to grab the phone. And that person, I would, we were up here in a session and you could hear it, and that person stated that she did speak at the podium, but that person was not hit. I don't even think she knows, and there are two witnesses independent, and I know you don't know, you don't know that yet. But my concern is if we're using your police department, which I have had, I haven't counted how many calls today, I know you have better use of your officers than cell phone picks. You just do. When we look at everything that is happening, you know, in here, people take pictures and cameras in here every single day, we have them over here. Paul got about one million cell phones on the street. We can safely assume our actions will be reported, whether we like it or not. I don't think with over a hundred and forty homicides, that a warrant issued for a young, crummed-eyed person that did not have a weapon, a person that was not a serial killer or murder or anything. That we're taking, according to what I've heard, officers off the street, because that incident, six to ten officers were surrounded at this person's home, according to their children. That's just, we have a hundred and forty plus unsolved homicides. I did reach out to you today, and I did wanna talk about it, unfortunately, I prefer talking privately as opposed to public, I've always said that, Jim, but this, this is the time I made to get you. So surely to keep the people safe, absolutely, quite entry, I agree, but downstairs, everyone comes in downstairs, let's keep every resident safe. Not just specific to make a political point, which I feel is political. These council chambers are not dangerous, like people say, they're just not. But it is the assumption and the look of it, that it is dangerous to have a metal detector. I care if they gun, I'm licensed to care, you know that and all the other officers do. It's no secret. And when we take away people's rights, I have a problem with that. Because it's my right and others' rights, I did speak to Attorney Kim, ask him, is it something we can't afford, import? People don't have to go through that metal detector, they have the right to tell them that I'm going to go around it. So we're putting this in here as just a point. They don't have to walk through it, you don't have to give the one their name. You have the right to open carry, you have the right, you have concealed weapon, it is just to say, hey, we know you have a gun, that's really some new people's business. So when I came through, and the officers were very kind, so I will not be going through the metal detector. Why? Because it's an infringement on my rights. And my rights are important, I will not be underneath a tyrant or a dictator. Not ever. And I know it's not you, but sometimes you gotta speak up for that department, because the mayor's telling everybody, he runs the public police department.
Thank you, any other discussion? Any other discussion in the first round? Discussion in the second round, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I'mma, I'mma call that selective political prosecution. See, Attorney Kim is issuing warrants and prosecute these misdemeanors politically. He did it with me. Hurricane Robert, in my opinion, resigned, she's facing a penalty of perjury. With his strategy. We'd have got the, we'd have got the court record. The judge admonished the special prosecutor for the perjury that Hurricane Robert committed. People looking at her resigning, I'm looking at the press, she don't have honor for this perjury charge, and Attorney Kim was behind that. Had me arrested full clear trial for getting out of my seat, going to the bathroom. Now I need to issue a warrant if it relates to all of this hoopla about this, uh, metal detector. Attorney Kim, in my opinion, has been abusing his authority as it relates to political prosecutions for all he got is misdemeanors. And he picking and choosing which misdemeanor warrant he wanted to issue. I turned in two or three complaints of threats to Officer Metcalf. One, folks telling me how they gonna, or wanna face me in the street. I told them I lived on Russell Street and I had eleven oh one South Saginaw Street. It's recorded. I had an attorney stand on public record and tell me he was gonna crack me across my head. It's recorded. Y'all remember that? And Attorney Kim ain't issued a warrant yet. And then I had the deputy chief of staff, Murdock, arrest me and put me in the hospital, they ain't issued a warrant yet. But when he swung at the white police officer, he was toast. Political selective prosecution, it rises to the level of cause. See, Attorney Kim's supposed to work for this council and the mayor's office. But he thinks the mayor is the only one that can appoint him, and he keep a ninety hundred thousand dollar job plus he kissing the mayor's butt. And political prosecutions and warrants. Well, I got other charges, I got fingers in the charger that's saying we can try to remove him for cause. And I'mma show it trial. And then next on my list is gonna be a police chief, Memphis, back, somebody don't get a handle on this prosecution. And selective prosecution, and a selective enforcement. You can be back there laughing and chit chat if you want to, Attorney Kim, but I ain't stepping. I ain't stepping. And the Dale Lewis petition in action for two-three meetings, she had something to do with causing some of this mess. Had something to do with causing it, and then running over to the preachers and NAACP and folks of that nature, like Clarence Thomas, running to the NAACP all the time. Well, I called immediately with the concerned pastors and the Dale Lewis, she ain't showed up yet. And David Chris Martin's in the middle of it. Yeah, I won't name names. Politics and polit tricks. And then I got a boy got us on the news with a baseball cap on talking about public safety. This police over there, metal detectors on Pearson Road, Miami, New York. Don't play politics with this legislative body. This legislative body is one short of taking back control of this city. And I pray we gonna straighten that out when we get rid of evil word. Recall petitions to cops trial. And I won't name folks. When I bring these resolutions to remove these political prosecutions for cause, I don't care what some folks, and I won't name them. We don't get the five votes we need, this month or six months from now, and the target is on you and Attorney Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, that is your time, is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Attorney Kim? Um, and before I give to this guard, I know that they can read because the staff does walk up from the back door. Here is one of my, my concerns, um, where it states, uh, government law states that open carry of firearms is permissible in Michigan subject to certain exceptions. Detail N C L seven-five zero point two-three-four D, specifically seven-five zero point two-three-four D. Regarding possession of firearms on certain persons prohibited after ability violation of Michigan law. Except provided in subsection two, a person, a person shall not possess a firearm on the premise of the following. A depository of financial institution, a church or other house of religious worship, a court, a theater, a sports arena, a daycare center, a hospital. An established license under the Michigan Litigation Control Act, not made of the public access asset of the Michigan law. So when you, and this is from the law firm, so can you tell me, your, wasn't there a legal thing to give before they put it up at council chambers?
Uh, there, my office is not formally, legally taken on the, uh, on the metal detector or on possession of firearms. Yeah, in, in the manner that you're discussing in terms of that informal, we look in such as the ones that are sent to council with the other administration, uh, when, when we pass them.
Okay, because I, I mean, I am very serious about second amendment rights and violation, I, when we talk about safety of city hall. It should be the entire city hall, not just the third floor to make it look like it's dangerous up in here. It's not dangerous, some people might need to watch what they say, some people need to put gas light in this community. This community is continuously gassed with by individuals, and then we end up with a metal detector. When people lie and say certain things happened and they didn't, we end up with a metal detector. I have a real problem with that because this, this is their place, and if we don't wanna serve and we that scared, then resign. That's just personally how I feel. You know, we have got some serious problems where now it looks like, and I know Chief Green is back, you're talking to Major, people are calling the police department to stop. It's not a good look. You have people saying that the city attorney is using his power, which would be you, because everything falls underneath you, that you're using your, using your power to go after the people. Since when did we issue warrants for someone taking a picture of somebody? And then someone saying, don't do that. And then they, them going back and forth, we have a hundred and forty homicides. A hundred and forty-four. And we are picking and choosing this. Not really, I'm not gonna say, I'm gonna say this, this has upset me on so many levels. When we have, I know Councilman Fifer has gotten death threats, I don't know how serious, that has been taken. When someone is literally calling his, his home and threatening his family, and his children's infant pictures were put up. I have so many problems with, with all this and this, you know, I'm scared to come in, stop, pray, mess, and stop gaslight this community. Stop it. But when they use your office, if you take off like we do, then it comes into question, having someone's home surrounded by lit police. If we had ten police at this person's house, do we have ten police, police on the street? We even have the police every day, as we're shooting overhead, uh, regencies are now midway. We have shootings in areas, we have these property taken, ten officers, ten, and this will decide to, to get one person. This person is so dangerous that we're going to send ten people get a warrant, bypass Laten's office, the Tennessee prosecutor did not sign this. The prosecutor did not sign it. It was your office, you didn't follow your normal process, which is send it over to prosecutor Laten and let him review what he designed.
That is actually not the process.
Oh, it's generally it is. Oh, no, that was Danielle Green.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, go ahead, just.
Um, so, I'll be going now to, um, move forward on, um, discussing this matter that we're discussing right now. I appreciate the metal detectors being installed for whatever reason, whether it's for weapons or anything else. I also appreciate the officers being here, um, I do believe we work in a hostile working environment, whether it's, um, council or, um, members of the audience. Not agreeing with some of our folks, which they have a right to, because that's what democracy look like, so I embrace that. But on the other hand, as a council person who's been here for two years, um, it concerns me. The environment that we are, um, working in, dealing with, some of the emails, and then the listen to some of my colleagues, I just heard my colleague Fifer last week. I think it was last week, when you talked about some of the threats that you, and some of my other colleagues who have received threats and emails. It, it's very concerning to me. That's why I'm kinda hesitant to get close to some people, because I don't know if you one of them, that's, call yourself, you know, I done recently got some, um, calls, they gonna be here or whatever, so I don't know. So you just have to be prepared at all times, and not that we wanna have to go there, but we might have to go there one day, because somebody might try to try one of us. And I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm protecting myself by all means necessary when it comes down to that, if someone tried to approach me in inappropriate way. That may, um, come across when I feel like I need to protect myself. So I appreciate whoever you take, whatever, whoever decided, whether it was in there, or some city council working behind closed doors, with the attorney, whoever y'all decide. I appreciate the fact that you guys put the metal detector back there, I appreciate the fact that you guys come to city council to defuse, I know it's a brave area in this. When it comes down to, do people have a right to come in and run in guns and weapons and all that and that stuff, so I won't get into that. But I appreciate the effort that you guys are going to, um, make it more safer, this is nice, we did a beautiful job in building, um, the apartment, remodeling the council chambers. So, um, while we in this nice chamber, I also want us to feel safe, and if some of my colleagues feel like they don't wanna come to city council, because they may get the threats. And people saying that they gonna do something, they still, I mean, we don't know if we're not that individual or whatever. But in this political world, on a national level, you see what happened in Washington DC on January the sixth, when they tried to overturn the election, when Trump didn't win. So just to see all of that climate, on a national level and on a local level, we need to be doing all things necessary to make sure we protect ourselves. As elected officials, make sure we protect the residents when they come down here, everybody should feel safe. And everybody have a right to express themselves, but we don't have a right to, um, be threatening people and, um, possibly wanting to do harm to anybody, I'm against that on all kinds of levels.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Madam Chair, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Um, yes, and you know, Councilman Murphy, um, you're right. We should feel safe. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't feel one way or the other about the metal detectors, however, I feel.
However, I feel like this whole metal detector situation was installed under false pretenses. Okay? This is all to me a political ploy. Several things is happening, um, with this council and the administration. It's all political. And it's coming from one individual, our leader at the top. He's perpetuating all kind of mess, okay? Just shadiness, crookedness. Then he gonna make a comment saying that, basically insinuating that he put the metal detector out there because one of the council members have an entertainment contract. What? Are you serious? I can't believe this. Then we got a council member up here who has started all kind of, I call it the three Cs. Commotion, chaos, confusion. Now you running around scared, talking about somebody threatened you. When you done caused all kind of, you done cussed out, um, creatures in the city and all kind of stuff. Now you scared. Are you serious? Make all of this make sense to me. And then we got, we got the mayor running around here spinning up money. We got a resolution here for the metal detector spinning up money that wasn't even, wasn't even approved by council. Come on now. Just a total disrespect. I would like to make a, um, a motion, an amended motion, to have this discussion after council comments, after public speaking and after council comments.
Okay. There's an amended motion to have this discussion item after council comments, council response, right?
Yeah, council response.
Is there support?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion for amended motion, and I believe that is one round. Let me double check. It's five minutes. Go ahead. Would I get the, Mr. Murphy, you don't need to worry.
Yeah, I'll be closing to those who have discussed it. And Mr. Murphy, you got my attention. You say if you don't even wanna have a discussion on this, what I call it, a political metal detector ploy. You don't even wanna discuss it. How can you learn if you don't discuss? How can the community learn? Mr. Murphy, I don't mind a metal detector myself because I can do it with a bunch of metal on it, it didn't go off. I had sale bombs, safety lights, all kind of stuff, and I don't have too many metal detectors and they usually go off. You should wanna discuss it, why it didn't go off? Folks walking through with guns, it ain't going off. And you don't wanna vote to have a discussion? Mr. Murphy, you say on all kind of levels, you don't appreciate threats. I don't feel threatened by you when you talk about if I acted or talked a certain way in the street on my side of town, that's threatening to me. Do you know how many times I've been threatened over the 10 years I've been here? I don't even answer them private calls no more. The name doesn't pop up on my idea, it better show me Michigan, Louisiana, Texas or something. Do you know, Mr. Murphy, when I took this job, just like Marjorie Kean, I'm on a road. I don't mind getting shot in the head for what I stand for. If I'm fighting for both civil rights, if I fight for, I would take millions of dollars to rent my bathtub and me at a young early age. If I get shot in the head, I hope I made it to that. I don't appreciate crooks and steers and all kind of mess. I took pride in telling the truth, but not lying. So I'm for real about it. The minute I get scared to give my life up, I'm gonna get out of this job. I'm just threatened at the cornerstone because of chaos from both like you, Kate Fields, and others. I'm used to, y'all gotta get some fixed teeth, rebels, throw people out, treat people wrong, and then get scared to sit. I've been threatened. I've been beat up, sent to the hospital. Ain't a warrant been issued yet. Ain't a warrant been issued yet. This country love black and white issues. But when it comes to black on black, you can be dead. You can be dead. You got folks back there laughing and talking now. Look at it, he told me the other day, I ain't the definitely cheaper staff, I'm the cheaper staff now. The same one who brought seven, eight police when we was in the dome meeting on Opera Barns, yeah, Kate. Up here, we doing an interview with the metal detector, with Channel Five. He in the hallway hollering and nearly standing there condoning.
What?
A lot of the problems come from the administration and council meeting. We'd have get walked off, Attorney Kim issuing warrants, selective. It's called selective political prosecution. Trying to shade the legislative body, Mr. Murphy, you don't even know they doing it to you.
What?
You don't even wanna discuss it because you don't even know they doing it to you. They trying to jam up the legislative body reputation and you ain't smart enough to fight back.
Yes, thank you very much. And just for the record, let me clear the record. What I said I was not going to do and I'm not gonna do it even on this amended motion. I said I will be voting no again. So I want you to make sure that you hear what I said. I won't be voting yes, I'll be voting no on this motion to discuss this because we discussing this now. We two rounds of five minutes and then we just did amended motion. So that's 15 minutes per council that we have to discuss this issue, dealing with the metal detectors or whatever you wanna discuss. I'm not gonna turn around and discuss this, then turn around and vote and discuss it again and spend a lot of time discussing something that you think is political or whatever.
Which request?
So you don't wanna discuss it today, tomorrow, the next day, or you wanna wait till the day of do is decide to show up?
That's a proper request, what does this, Murphy?
My point is actually, that's why I wanna discuss this again because of situations like that right there. So I won't be, um, voting to discuss this again after we done already discussed it. Um, if y'all wanna, if y'all wanna vote, let's discuss it again, and that's on y'all for now. And I don't need all your wisdom to say what I just said, thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna be very clear with you because when we were up here, Mayor Neely, and it is really, it's really hard to not, when they want you to stay above the fray and to keep it nice when someone else is going nasty to you. It's hard for you to stay, I promised to Ray King, to stay classy when someone else is classless. It's difficult. So we were up here, Mayor, and it's on video. He makes the remark and brings my children into, in regards to the metal detector. My kids have no place in this, none at all. He tells me to raise my kids. My kids have mortgages, two of them. And the youngest one's going to college, he has a 4.0 GPA, he's going to state college. How dare he bring up my kids? He is a little person to do that, and it's on video. And how he go off like that? But the community needs to know who it is because gaslighting is what he does. He can't control us on the first floor. He ain't got no business on the third floor. He got problems keeping personnel. We got six or seven CFOs underneath his leadership. We have no DPW. No one wants to jock, no one wants to work for him. He's out of a 30 key position for people who quit. Not because they don't wanna stay. It is because he gaslights this community. So what is gaslight? Gaslight, there are four types. It can be divided into four different types. Outright lying, that's Mayor Neely. Manipulation of reality. He's trying to get everybody to feel it's so dangerous here. We gotta have a metal detector. Inner political optics, scapegoating, and coercion. Some people don't even know what's happening to them. You don't even know. And then what he's good at is very cunning, is turn around and twist the words to make you feel like you're the rock. He told that immunity, want to get rid of our city, but yet we have the right to do it. Why is he peddling this at a, a community meeting? He said that Clyde Edwards, did he fire, terminate the CFO? But Clyde Edwards stated she was terminated. He said, well, she looked for another job. That's outright lying. So when gaslighting is a form of psychological manipulation in which the abuser attempts to sow self doubt and confusion in their victim's mind. Typically, gas lighters are seeking to gain power and control over the other person by distorting reality. Our reality is distorted, like this is so dangerous that we have to have a metal detector. Put it at the front door. That's where it should go. I'm not against the metal detector, but put it at the front door. By distorting reality and forcing them to question their own judgment and intuition. So when you begin to question your own judgment and intuition, when they cut off the news, the only news you got is coming from a person that's a gaslighter. A person who was using our police department and resources is the only person to stop them. This is wrong. And when you sit in silence and don't say something, it's going to continue to escalate and change and evolve. You send someone's house for a cellphone, and I'm taking somebody's picture, they take mine, and they just grab, I'm not gonna get anybody's face with a hammer. I'm not gonna be giving that face, taking pictures, and they ask me to not take pictures. Personal space is appreciated. If you don't want that to happen, stab people's face. You weren't here. And there's two witnesses that I just had to tell Chief Green here. Mayor Neely mentioned my kids, I have zero self-respect. And I didn't have baby dads, I have fathers who have some words to say to them. And that I'm not letting up. It's on video, you don't bring up people's kids. You do not bring up kids. And he has no problem. So if this is what our mayor is doing, the leadership top down, we're there, we lack leadership, there will be chaos. And thank you for your words, Councilwoman Jerry Wood, because you spoke correctly. You spoke what needs to be said. Residents better watch it. You better watch out how these Opera Barns running out this door too. You better watch that too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeifer.
You know, the metal detector, not for or against it, um, but I will say this, that it's politics. To me, putting it right there, that's like a scarlet letter, like this room is toxic. That's all it is. I mean, it's marking the front doors of Jews or whatever else. It's, it's doing it, to me, that is what that is. If it was about safety and keeping people safe, I think the chief of police would have answered my calls when I tried to reach out to him about my threats. I think he would have responded to the emails that we got. When we got emails that said we should be hung from trees. I think if it was about safety, we would have got a response about that. To me, that is a political movement. And it's to draw attention that this room is chaos. It's not about security. If it was about safety, the chief of police would not have avoided my call. He would have talked and anything else on my threats. But I'm not running. I'm here, I haven't missed a meeting. I had to leave early at the last meeting. But I'm constantly getting threats and I'm not, and I'm not avoiding these meetings like the plague. So whether or not we wanna think that it's about safety, it's not. It's not because the, you know, you can walk through there, like Councilwoman Bird said, it's not against the law to open carry, concealed carrying. It is to, if anything, it's to, um, what do they call it, stop the risk or to, um, to point people out, that's all it is.
Profile.
Profile, thank you. It's to profile people because you're not searching them for a gun. So anybody that goes up, now you're gonna be profiled for it alone. I don't understand. I, I'm carrying a gun right now.
Whoa!
After the month that I've had, uh, I'd be stupid not to.
Wait a minute, sir.
So, um, come arrest me.
Thank you, any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Um, I'm gonna take some time here. In regards to the metal detector, I'm rather ambivalent towards it. This has become a toxic environment and it becomes very provocative inside here. Everybody knows I carry gun too. I'm a like a member of the NRA and have been for a number of years, and I used to competitively shoot.
What?
You have to say it again.
I'm also a member of the Gun Owners Association of America. So I'm just gonna lay it all out there. My concern about this metal detector is that if you are able to carry legally, there's nothing anybody can do to stop you. So it is kind of profiling Mr. Pfeifer because people who come in and if we're stopped and asked to see our license, if we're carrying concealed or if you're carrying open, as long as it doesn't get concealed unless you have a concealed weapon license, what are you gonna do? What is really your profiling? And so I just, I do have, I have an issue with that. But because of the toxicity that exists here and on this council and towards the council member, because I suspect that almost every one of us have gotten up threats. There are some people I don't know for sure. But I know at least seven of us have. So, and that's ridiculous because we're just trying to serve our city. That's all we're trying to do. If you don't like the way I go, don't go for me the next time if I represent you. That's fine. But we're just trying to serve our city. As I said, I don't know how I feel about the metal detectors because I don't know how enforceable the whole thing is. So, any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Mr. May.
Madam Chair, the point of this whole discussion is because of the council roots. Simply, I wanted to make a motion for suggestion that we discuss this. Simply, I wanted to make a motion for a suggestion that we discuss this topic. You say I want to order it without objection, so she had to make a motion. And when we made a motion, we get five minutes of peace under these council rules. We should have to do that. And Mr. Murphy, that type of discussion don't allow us to ask Attorney Kim the legality. It doesn't allow us to ask the chief of police the legality. It's a discussion about putting this important topic with a lot of technicalities on the agenda. So I beg to differ with you when you say I won't vote to have a discussion because we didn't discuss it. Now, that was a way of jumping through hoops of responding to what I'm seeing on ABC twelve. See, ABC twelve was here and Channel Five was here, was it yesterday, if they were both in. I was contacted by Channel Five. ABC twelve was here to get responses from Mr. Lee. And I've been doing interviews for close to ten years and never seen the mess I seen the other day. I said, turn the cameras around. You had police, you had Taylor, you had Neely, and they was acting a fool as I was trying to interview with Channel Five. But when I looked at Channel Twelve, I told the young man, he's twenty, we're leaving out. They ain't gonna show that. ABC Twelve gonna edit that. Then you go to W E M and they tell you the August and Brooklyn. Same day, same cameras. See, Neely used to work at Channel Twelve. And back in the day, when we seen people getting favorable coverage, we used to do and get signs and go pick it in front of Channel Twelve to make sure that NBC and Mid Michigan now am live cover. And it's get to that point. I'm not gonna let Channel Twelve, like my future home. And the march to the narrative from me being this council. I've been told Channel Twelve would be, be careful who you talk to to get a story. Get the whole story. And I got no problem taking twenty, thirty people over, what is it, um, a beer? And out there with signs because they playing favoritism with a guy who used to work there against the whole legislative body. Ain't that ridiculous? I'd be comparing a rent beat to eighteen news media, Mid Michigan now, W E M, because that's what the majority of the people look at. And until you get it straightened out, the majority of the people don't know. They just looking at Matt Franklin and Don Jones. That ain't it. There's way more to it than that. And he's standing in grand. And it's great. So it's our job to straighten it out. And we shouldn't have to do that alone. And Mr. Murphy, we shouldn't have to discuss these important topics in a maneuver for an agenda change. We should be able to put it on the agenda and the council should support us. If we have to subpoena the city attorney and put him under oath and swing and tell the truth to chief of police, we need to let the community hear these wrongs and the debate. And I don't care what voice you use. When you both not to put these important topics on the agendas and let a mayor stand on Channel Twelve and not tell the whole story, I'm thinking, what y'all doing? You thinking you gonna hop from council person to chief of staff? You thinking you gonna hop from council person to the popular public work? Right now, you're a council person. Stack up for yourself and stand up towards the right.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you. Once again, I want to be supportive of, um, this discussion because we are discussing it now and we don't need to add it on the agenda to discuss it again as we've already spent this much time discussing it now. And we ain't even got really into the agenda that's in, um, resolution. But, um, this is an add-on. We still don't add-on. We have not even gotten to the agenda. So we're all going to, um, support discussing this immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Any other discussion? Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion? Seeing none, go call vote to, um, change this motion to have it after council response. Sure. The initial, would you like the initial motion? Was to have a discussion item for metal detectors either before public speaking or after public response. Ms., um, Winfrey Carter amended that motion to have an after-council response. So this is to have that discussion, but potential discussion after council response. Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Briskly? No.
Yes.
Ms. Barnes? Yes.
No.
The Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Vote is four, yes, three, no?
The vote is four, yes, three, no. That motion fails. We're now back to the amended motion. We were in our second round of discussion. The only people who have not spoken, um, are Mr. Pfeiffer, Ms. Michelle, I think that's it. Would you guys like to speak? This motion is to have the discussion item either before public speaking or after public response. Seeing none, movement. This is the vote for the original motion. Ma'am.
Ms. Wilson, no.
No.
Ms. Briskly? No. Ms. Murphy Carter? Yes. Ms. Barnes? Yes. Ms. Tam? No. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is four, yes, three, no?
The vote is four, yes, three, no. That motion fails. Um, we have two add-ons. We received another add-on resolution. Um, add-on resolution. Um, I'll order an add-on two, um, without objection. And, but we had an objection on add-on one, which is the resolution Weinstein Electric for Electrical Services for the City Council Chamber's renovation. Is there a motion to add add-on one?
I'm going to add, um, resolution one to Weinstein Electric for Services. This one for change for the City Council's renovation.
All right, it's been moved. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Through you to City Clerk, it's down to you. This is a resolution for some electrical services that relates to this council chamber renovation. What is it, uh, hundred and eleven thousand dollars? Or seventy thousand?
No, it's thirty, thirty-seven thousand. Just thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand that amount? And what is it for?
All through AV equipment that has been installed for the chambers.
Is it gonna have anything to do with the capability of us carrying that, um, our meaning?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars would tighten that up?
Yes, that would. Pfeiffer, everything has been done so far.
You know, I want to emphasize and say real loud that, you know, in my opinion, even when they put me out wrongly, they voted to fix up the council chamber. And I didn't have a lot to do with the details, but if they just voted to fix up their house, they showed their vote to fix up his other folks' house. Yes, I had a person stall me today. See, with the group that bought our hundred and ninety houses for foreclosure. Through you, and I could wait to lay it, but you know, and not your man. This is it when he does not spend an awful money. Fix up this house or that house.
Ms. Mays, this resolution is to add it to the agenda. Please say.
I know what it is. I know what it is, but if you don't discuss it now, you might not never get a chance to weigh you, Murphy, and with Shaq. I know what it is. I know what the other one was, but I just didn't know how you, Ms. Shaq, and Murphy was gonna vote. So believe me, I'm ten years deep in this business. And I know I'll wait to Murphy with Thomas. Go ahead. Because I don't think you can afford people.
Madam Chair, please stop.
What just happened, Mays?
Did he call a point on? I'm saying everything is stopping for him because that was.
He called it back.
Oh, well, I showed you. I'm looking at things, but I hear y'all. Y'all didn't know I could do that, did you? Look one way and hear that to the end. That's a great feat that I'm able to do. And it's distracting, um, Ms. Briskly. I don't want to get into what the deal do, Ru, Winston, you and everybody out of water. But y'all showed and took me through the ranges. Like I said, for me, ARCA funds, people voted to fix up this house. And that's just thirty-something thousand that you asked me, do I know what this is about, Ms. Briskly? Is, yeah, I know what it's about. It's about fixing up the council's house. This is what I call the council's house.
Oh, yeah.
And y'all did it when you wrongly threw me out. So I'm trying to catch up on the money that's been fixed, that's been spent to fix up this house. And I want y'all to spend fifteen to twenty million to fix up a bunch of houses. And as I was saying before, I was rudely interrupted. The people who bought a hundred and ninety houses in the city of Flint contacted me. And this resolution, the next one, that I didn't object to just for discussion for your point of information, Ms. Briskly and Mr. Murphy, for fifty thousand for legal services, East of Michigan, residence space and foreclosure. I'm glad that boy fixed it. Because I didn't call from them both too. And I wanted to make a quick refer of a survivor through you, Madam Chair, to the city attorney and through to Clyde Edwards. And Ms. Lynn, Madam Clerk, if you have to put it in writing, but I want to ask their chair that we have a right to first review of this here before they took that bunch of dollars. And I want to see what the timing is on it because I remember taking a check over to the county. But I don't remember seeing a list. We could avoid a one point two million. So I want to make that defer. I hate voting that episode.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'm not going to post putting it on the council or on the agenda, but once again, we're doing stuff backwards in the city. I know you're all surprised, but why are we getting the bill after the fact? After the work started to done, we should have got the bill and the and approve the contract before they start. So every time we get a bill after the work is done, when we've lost all of our leverage. So, um, through you, Madam Chair, to the city clerk. Madam Clerk, before Monday, um, can I get an itemized bill? This lump sum, um, just doesn't cut it for me. I want to know how many hours they put because it's labor and material. How many hours they put and how much they're charging us for each one of these items. So I would like to itemize bills and, uh, I don't know if I'll support it on Monday because I've set out the record before. I think there was other things that, um, to me, this is a violation of the purchasing ordinance. Because the work was ordered to be done without council approval. I know we, we allocated dollars, um, in the ARCA plan for this, but why are we getting bills after the fact for work that's already been done? It's no different than if the mayor does it. We shouldn't be getting bills after the fact. All because of the purchasing ordinance, it's ten grand. Anything over ten grand, we have to approve. And if this is thirty-seven thousand dollars after the work has already been done, it's a violation of purchasing ordinance. So, um, just because it was done for our council chamber doesn't mean we still don't have to follow the rules.
Plenty of information, Mr. Pfeiffer. The, the bills are attached to the back and they do add up.
Yeah, they do add up to that, but.
I just wanted to.
How much are they charging us for USB kit? Is it nineteen thousand? Like, I want to know, I want to know what, obviously, the, the totals are on there. How did they come up with the dollar? Uh, how much was labor? How much were they paying? How much were they paying for the TVs? But I also want to know exactly why even we, we are, we write the ordinance and we write the, the purchasing ordinance. Why are we violating to, uh, upgrade our own to Mr. Mays's appointment to our own house? Why are we violating that? So that's what I have a problem with. Thank you.
Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Devina, once again, thank you for all your hard work. Our recent pump and an oxygen bomb removal reservation of this council table. I know it wasn't out of easy task. And, um, so one of nine councilmen, I just want to compliment you, you know. I appreciate all the work, hard work that you and the building recovery and city approach did to. Um, I know you stick to God's sales house and additional work to do. I'm excited about, um, additional work, which I was able to do, um, getting to finish putting all the pictures up and the year is going to go out and all the rest of it. And I look forward to the final grand opening that you want to do with the council chamber once it's been done. So I'll be supporting this because I want to see the, the, the project or something. That I know in, um, former clerk, Diana Brown, was here. She wanted to do the renovation of this council chamber. So this is all part to do this. It's fine if I don't, and I just want you to know I appreciate the, the work. And I know it wasn't an easy task. Um, so I'll be supporting this resolution to be in this role.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? In the first round, Mr. Mays? Any other discussion? Um, I'll take a few minutes to my time. I, and Mr. Mr. Pfeiffer, I believe when the emergency manager came in, and this has not been overturned by council, is that they changed the amount of money in the purchasing order to seventy-five thousand dollars before it came to council. It has not been, that's a, a quarter, a quarter that needs to be changed. We had discussed it when we first came on council. We had discussed it when we first came on council, and, but that's seventy five thousand, so, that's just for your information. All right, second round.
Yes, Madam Chair. Yeah, Madam Chair, I brought that voice and change that you just referred to for both councils. And the majority would move on. That ain't the only ordinance that the emergency manager got mixed messed up. But to Mr. Pfeifer's point, the majority of this council won't follow their own rules and ordinance. And that's what we got a problem with. Mr. Murphy, I got news for you. I also appreciate Ms. Donna Hughes helping coordinate some of this room in council chambers. But I got news for you. When you get ninety four million dollars, you can do a lot. You can do a lot. I'm not taking nothing away from Ms. Donna Hughes, but you want to give a speech about what you think. When you get ninety four million dollars, you could turn this into a disco. It could be lights, flashes, you know, they had a, a, a thing down there. I don't know if it was the Venetian or where it was, but you could have this thing three D. The issue is what you gonna do for these people in their houses? I'm getting five, six dollars a week, queens, y'all gonna vote on their roofs and vinyl side. Kitchens and cats. I got business people waiting in the wings. Mo peep, too many, tall building downtown. Uh, that's not uptown, that's mo peep, it's not important. I got people ready to buy corner stores. Nine hundred thousand of generates one point three million for them a year. Black boat. So, I'll take my hat off, but tip my hat to Ms. Donna Hughes, too, but guess what? You showed them to invite Ms. Winterguy with ninety four million dollars. And I wish this council who violates the law. Both contrary to ordinance and rules and law. And I can name them. They had been both lockstep. Do you believe, they are, you believe this record, they would have been both lockstep. But before Hurricane Rover there, she was both with me. Not Ms. Jack vote right with me. Quincy, LaDale, LaShack, Hurricane Rover, Worthy. Both lockstep. Mr. Pfeifer, you learned something. Cause LaDale were tricky. She a trick man. She done caused confusion with you. And I really, I take responsibility for some of what I say and do. But guess what? You better be careful who you roll with. Cause they'll stab you in the back, the side, the neck. You'll have water dripping out of you like Jesus. This is, this is dirty rules. Don't vote against the rules and the law. Don't run with it. Try your best, the best advice I got for council people with me is act on them. Try your best to vote right. Try your best to independently read and vote. Don't get it no quick. And whoever the mayor is, don't get excited because you're down there, because all of them ain't right. They're tricky. But they all good. People will chase money, line mowers, yes. Cause they don't do nothing, I'm gonna give you a camera, I got it. Watch yourself, boy, watch yourself. So, I'm gonna have fun with it, I'm gonna talk about it, and I ain't gonna bite my tongue. I'm gonna point out who's who was what, and we gonna get by the six of us. Y'all work on that word, if we talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Go ahead.
I didn't want to do a point of information, but we also, um, to your seventy five thousand dollar point, we also passed a resolution. Every sentence, primarily one of the part, usually kind of us before it's, so. I know multiple things that, uh, we didn't agree on, that's all I was.
Any other discussion, second round? This is to get, um, any other discussion in, um.
Yes, let's, I'll just add a question.
Go ahead.
They talking about renovations to the, uh, council chamber. The, um, metal detector. What budget did that come out of? Um, Madam Chair, you who, um, clerk, Donna Hughes. Do you know?
It's my understanding that it's coming out of the maintenance budget, it's not coming out of council.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Ms. Burns, a seat movement?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I do, uh, I, I understand the five percent, but when you do a, um, you're getting a, a invoice, and that you can, you want itemized for each line out to show the cost, which you can just, I think, just send it back to Weinstein Electric. I believe you want a lot of this this year, too. Mine is something that, yeah. So, I see, and some is just easy, but I'm looking at some of these items up here, and they're not expensive. Yeah, but I, I do see that, what you're saying, with the, the two lump sums. But the other part is, um, will that, will this, Madam Chair, will we be able to hit it up online? For, um, Comcast? All right, so it will be, do we have like a, will this have that party? Or we have to still use individually?
Is that to Ms. Donna Hughes?
Oh, yes, yes, to Ms. Donna, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Tom.
I'm sorry, you're asking if, if this includes the broadcast or whatever?
Yes.
Um, it's just a quick, to make it possible to do that, but yes, this would allow us to do that.
And then I know we can get talked about, will the courts be here that the press can tap into, or?
Um, that's something we're working on, but, um, we've already done, uh, and we'll just, the audio, can try to work on that, but, yeah, that's.
Okay. And then for the, we have the mail detector, and we have the, uh, I don't know if the officer, we normally have one officer. Whose budget does it come out to pay for, a police officer? We have to man it.
Every, the officer that's here for a meeting, that doesn't come out of county budget, that's the administration, the police budget.
Okay, so there will be nothing extra, or shouldn't be, for demanding that, um, manning the, uh, mail detector?
As of right now.
As of, okay. As, as of right now, okay. All right, that is my, um, oh, I, I do want to speak to changing, um, Madam Chair, when we, I had a conversation over a year ago. Changing that, um, threshold, that seventy five thousand. I know that our prior clerk suggested before it was three thousand dollars, and we need to lower that threshold because of emergency management. And that you were really abusive.
Really racist.
Racist, yeah. I'm tired of that, but yes, right, you, you, you were right there to, to lower that, because there are a lot of items that, and even personal, I would go for the contracts that come through, that, um, personal.
Personal service contract.
Personal service contracts also can be funded without coming to council, if it's under the seventy five thousand dollar threshold. So, that was what, I think we do need to look at that.
I, um, Ms. Burns, in response to your comment, I had spoken with, um, Mr. Whitkin in regards to that. And, um, I was, I, I think we might need to change it to fifty thousand and not lower than that, because otherwise we could be very much inundated with resolutions, and we are stymied already in what we are getting done.
And, and I know, I, I, we had that conversation, I was having concerns, which was, he felt it would be too many, but he's gone. And I think if we do, when they do it, maybe bundle them, so that we can see, because there's a lot of things that are gonna slip in that we don't, that we don't know.
Well, the check register was being put out of line.
They taking it, it's, it's off now, isn't it? Yeah, cause I know it, it was, it was offline, I know Mr. Morris still knew, so I've been very kind to not have him come and ask questions, but he's got to fill, fill himself out with. So, I just say, we need to take a look at lowering that threshold again, because there was a resolution that was brought forward by Council Mays, and we do need to take a look at it, it was gonna be.
Ms. Burns, the check registers are still there, it's just they're down on the page, it's about two thirds of the year.
Okay, thank you. So, having that door, I think is, is important, I think we need to look at that again, so that, uh, we can have those. But I think we don't want to do like fifteen hundred dollars, some people may not, but maybe bundle those in. But I think we need to watch this, we just got a mail detector at our doorstep, and we had no notice of.
Thank you. Thank you, is there another discussion? Any other discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
I know, um, we do have, um, budget, um, the emergency manager gave the seventy five thousand dollars. But this, that seventy five thousand dollar threshold was, um, here prior to Mary needing to become an in office. Um, it wasn't a prob, it wasn't a problem then, when the, um, previous administration was, um, utilizing the seventy five thousand threshold. What, um, and I'm not saying whether it was or not, I'm just using that as an example. If it, if it was a problem, it should have been a problem then, and it should have been right then, even by the public, or for those who have been on council for ten years, um.
What's your question?
It's only one, sitting up here, been up here for ten years, you can do like they say in the rap song, say my name.
That's improper, go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you very much. Um, what, I, I, I was willing to look at the seventy five thousand dollar threshold, but I'm not looking at trying to lower it down to, you know, twenty five thousand or three thousand. But what happened is, um, you will have a whole bunch of resolutions starting to be added on to the agenda. So, we move it down to three thousand, so that means every finance, uh, three thousand dollars or more will be on the agenda. So, you'll get five minutes per agenda, um, per resolution, so that's gonna add more time on to us already discussing, and I'm not meant to be in here all, but it's five o'clock in the morning discussing, um, financial issues of three thousand dollars or more. So, it won't, I'll do fifty thousand or sixty five or sixty or something like that, but I'm not going out to, you know, three thousand dollars, and have a whole bunch of agenda items on the resolution, talking about finance. And then you get five minutes per two, two rounds, and you got, no. No, I won't be going, but I will discuss changing seventy five thousand, that's what I want to, but not until, you know, three thousand.
Any other discussion? Say nine, this is the vote to add on resolution, add on one to the agenda. No, this is add on number one. No, it was nine. Add on two was ordered without objection. Add on number one, go ahead, roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, Madam Chair, you might want to check with the first, I think I'm right about what I'm saying, add on one was bad without objection.
No, you objected to it.
Well, what you got? And then add on two anyway.
I hope that Mr. Mays objected to it, two people, two persons, right, without objection. You don't want to judge.
Add on number one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, if I'm gonna be sad, I have to, I don't get with it. However, I can mess up this way.
Okay, so add on, all right, so just for clarification, and so, we did have a motion on adding this on, so we do have to vote on it? And add on two, there is no pressure, correct?
So, what we vote on?
We voting on add on number one? Because that, there is a motion on the floor for add on.
Yes, there was a motion number two. Well, yes, that's number two, the two people.
And I thought you had said you objected to add on one, so, and I thought that's what I heard, so. All right, roll call vote, please, to add on, add on.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes.
Ms. Warren, the Ramson? Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, the Johnson? Those seven yes, zero no? Seven yes, zero no, that will be added. Um, there is a request for a closed session. Um, Madam, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to?
That's correct, Madam Chair, the Law Department is asking the committee to go into executive session.
They need to be in.
Yeah. Turn, turn it on, make sure your green light is on.
Well, I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair, Tom Sparrow, the Law Department is asking to go into, is asking the committee to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing settlement strategy in connection to four pending cases. You do need six votes to go into executive session.
Is there motion to go into executive session? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss? Bye. The four cases. The four cases, yes. Okay. Um, is there support?
Support.
It's been properly seconded to go into closed session. I believe we have discussion on this.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm gonna do an amended motion to put this closed session after council response. I'm gonna try to table it to after council response. Um, I want to hear brother speaking in council before we go in the back and shut the door up, and have folk out there propose different cases. And I'm doing it now, because I don't get folk, it can't be out there. Propose different cases. But I also, I'm tripping out legally if I'm in the first way. As I say, I'm wishing to prevent a resolution to enter the draw under section four, that six oh three, leave. Trying to get rid of the city attorney. I'm not gonna go in closed session, I'm not gonna go in. I don't think most justices leave their opinions in some way, and so, I'm not gonna condone the issue of what doing certain things, giving advice, talking slick. That's what we used to say at high school, coming up here, talking slick. I'm asking him, who he ducked and what, who made him a citizen, then he talking slick to this council. But then he get downstairs, and I'm not there, but I think one of the best people, he kissing, leaving them, but and ain't talking slick. And ain't talking slick. Now he sitting back there wanting to be slick. And I'm gonna try to get him to go. So I, I would give him, then get five votes, Attorney Sparrow. I'm not supposed to go in closed session. And maybe you can do it later. But when attorneys talk slick and give bogus legal opinions, half truths, I ain't stuck. Just dying for a new city attorney. Yeah, and, uh, we might get there. Might not be in the month of October. But watch us get there. I just seen the part that is the council people come and go. You know how you go to the party, they say you gotta work the room to say, "I'm working the room." Folks got to come and folks got to go. And when people see that, this city will be more respectful. And I don't care if they on the council or in this administration. If I'm the type person, Jack, that who is scared to say who need to come and who need to go, ain't no use for me to be here no more. People want me to point stuff at. Now I'm sitting here, Pastor Breelke, I'm starting to get concerned with myself. I'm the president of the Plink Chapter of National Action Network. It ain't used yet. Because I'm being very careful where I pick and choose. I don't like it when the A A C P quiet. I don't like it when the concerned pastors get half information. I'm sitting here as the president of the Plink Chapter of National Action Network. And it ain't used yet. But don't, that I'm way too long. When I choose to move, I move. And when I choose, I don't try to pick.
Which one?
Um, did, uh, how did, um, the first one, uh, did he do amended motion to this?
I thought he was going to add on one and he just made that.
Yeah, so he did amended motion and he the second amended motion.
Mr. May, did, did you make the motion?
No, I ain't made no motion.
Okay, thank you. So he has.
I'm speaking on the motion, and the motion was to go in closed session. I'm speaking on what I won't do and why. One more, and you're, Mr. Murphy, that's not something I need to know.
Yep.
Or I need to know about. But you might not want me to know that. But I need to know. All right, I won't be supposed to go into closed session at this time. I said I was gonna make a motion to table it to after council response. That's what you thought and did. And that was made and seconded.
Right, I did that as.
So I so moved.
So you're making a motion to go in?
To go in after public speaking, let people talk.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you support that?
Oh.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Um, so do we have an attorney in addition that's here to discuss this matter? And then we do, um, wha, what I'm concerned about is us stalling this discussion matter. And we can, additional attorneys to come in to discuss this matter and make here a way to discuss this. So who you to, Attorney K?
One more.
Pleasure, please.
Okay, discussion we got on the motion to table. Do you mean?
Postpone. It's one round in three months.
What about a motion to table till after public speech? Is that what they call postpone?
Um, this is a motion to postpone definitely. It's one round in three months.
No, definitely, yeah, until after public speech.
Right, that's what this is, one round in three months.
Bad language about table.
This is a motion to postpone definitely, which is one round in three months.
But you don't see no table, right?
To, to table, there's post, there's table. It's not debatable.
That's what I was thinking.
But, um, you didn't ask for it to be tabled. You asked for it to be postponed until after certain time. So that is postponed definitely. That's the motion that's been, that.
Right, you didn't want to postpone after that table and that's why I'm with it. Let's proceed with one round. I'm just knowing, see, I didn't even have to click at that table to do it with the discussion. I didn't want to hear.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
That's what I.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. To the attorney, are we, um, have additional attorneys that are being paid to, um, sit here, put us on to executive session? Because what I don't want to, um, see happen is we prolong one to this discussion with this.
Uh, we do. Uh, we've got, we actually have multiple of our outside counsel here. Uh, because there are four cases. Two of them are being led by outside counsel. Both of them have, have been counsel here.
Okay, thank you. So, um, seeing that we have additional attorneys here, um, that is on the books, I don't prefer to go into executive session. Now, so I won't be supporting, um, moving this to after, because I want to go into executive session in order for us to be able to, um, get those attorneys out of way. Because the longer they, um, sit in wait here, they still be in danger. And that's why I'm letting them stay. I'll, I'll, I'm gonna have to vote on this, but I will vote on to executive session in order to be able to get this off the board.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm a little different than Quincy Murphy. You know Quincy Murphy don't want to go at a threshold from seventy-five thousand that the mayor could spend with no question. He want to go to fifty. I want to take it to three thousand like it was under the old mayor. So he's a little different than me. Now all of a sudden, he don't want to spend money, plus three or four attorneys gotta wait until the public speak. Or, you know, maybe I just really want to try to pull this off and be made or cater to attorney queue. I don't care what he say. It ain't gonna hurt them attorneys to sit here and listen to the citizens and say, "Let's speak." And I tell you what, if I had voted one vote, it takes six to do what Mr. Murphy wanted to do. I ain't gonna vote for it. One, two, three votes. I see six votes. For Charlie to hear that song. I'm wishing I was God. I'm wishing I was dream. You know what I'm wishing? That if he ain't careful, it might not be no closed session today. See, I didn't say let the public speak. And he want to bust against it. See, like everything I say, he trying to prove something. And I don't know how my shat and grease mix and others gonna vote. Danny Byrne, Councilwoman Byrne. I hope this don't have nothing to do with me. Because I made my motion and I'm standing by it. If they hadn't objected to the discussion on the metal detector, we'd already been at public speak. But the way they got it set up, requesting changes for agenda, Mr. Murphy was part of these goofy groups. Now, what I'm gonna do, call attorneys, get them back up and say, out of the three attorneys that's here for these cases, how much are they making per hour? How much will we lose if we let the public speak? Man, look. If they vote this down and the public don't get to speak first, if we going in a closed session, you guess what I'm gonna say? When they get ready to vote to go into closed session, I'm gonna beg the public, not to do.
Any other discussion? Madam Chair. Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I, I, I will be supporting this, but I do want the public to be sitting here. And I know we're going over four. I know this council really gets into the questions in there. And so I don't want the public to further wait. Uh, we can come back and handle our business. I mean, the public speaking gets three minutes, and we can go through that. Public isn't often put first, but if they're here, we have opportunity to put them first. So I'm voting to keep the public first. Sorry for the attorneys, but they've been through this before. But I want to make sure we have residents that were concerned about our funds. And residents that have concerns about if they, they're going to get their roof fixed. So I hope there would be some understanding for that. Um, I was putting the residents first this time. And that to me is something that's important. We are now using that clock there. We're at six fifty-five, and these residents, our session started at five o'clock. The residents have already waited two hours and been doing it by members. There are more residents here than our attorneys here. So I am putting the residents first. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Um, Ms. Burns, I don't appreciate you, but when you looked at me, I said a lot of people have questions. I seen that. I seen that.
And they thought it was May's, bro.
Because I have seen that from Madam last. Um, I will be supporting this because obviously with the, um, with the short council, you know, members missing, I hope my other colleagues realize that there needs to be a little bit of compromise so we can get the business done. So I will be supporting this. And of course, hearing from the public, they're our bosses. So, um, the attorneys are not our bosses. Let's listen to our bosses, what that, what they have to say, and then we can report again.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll be voting yes for this motion. I will always put the residents first. I want to hear from the residents. They put me in this seat right here. So I will always hear from the residents first. Um, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm gonna take a few minutes and just say that it's obvious the votes are not there to, um, we'll just, I'll open and vote yes for this, but I want the council members to know that it's, the delay for the last two hours already cost us a thousand dollars.
Wow.
So, um, any other discussion? No, we're on. Madam, this is, um, vote to go into, um, and into closing session after council response. Ms. Preeceley?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Shad?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
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 So it's six yes, one no? The vote is six yes, one no. We will go into council, into, um, executive session after council response. That's true. I was just thinking about that myself. All right, so this is the vote to go into closed session. After, after council response, we'll vote to go into closed session. Um, now, now it's time for public speaking. Uh, members of the public shall have no more than three minutes to address the city council on any subject. Only one speaking, opportunity per speaker. Yes, this is pretty good.
Yeah, my name is Mr. Mitchell. Oh, it all Mitchell, right. Uh, to speak on this situation about, uh, gaslighting situation and about the council man scared to go home together, get, get police to run, watch over his house by their cell phone situation to keep from doing the business of the people of Flint. Just like, uh, Cedar Street, uh, the water broke the pipes over there to keep the, the guy from getting, uh, Third Ward from getting more, nine wars and stuff like that. Look at him over there, the third, I'm talking about my councilman Murphy. I live in Third Ward. Because people want to know about that gaslighting, see what the other council lady got, got rid of it because she, she just wouldn't mention that gaslighting stuff. When I first moved into Third Ward, I was invited to a whole property meeting, and then they say, they asked me, "What's your situation?" I said, "My wife is missing," and they said, "Your daughter booked the Alamo." Alamo was over on Delaware Street. I went over on Delaware Street. So I, so I moved over there and then the police, my eight police, a niggas got a watch, came up and talking about this a black dude in here, and he be coming, walking around that hood about three o'clock at night. And, and they, they told, put guns on me, told my face, "Come out of that house and you got anything in your pocket?" I wanted to get in my real smoke, but the brown cop come over, the Mexican cop, Julio. He stopped these white cops and told, "Get out of the way." "Mitchell, get in my, my Tahoe." He put me in the Tahoe and dropped me out back way across the river. But that's what this, this chief of police, we talking about, May's calling out and, and beat up May's and stuff and, and all that. And people like, "Look at him." And he, and, and that, and the, the lawyer. Just, just like in the Middle East, they always, always got to go in and get the hikers out the way, boy, then get on, what the jump? Get the Germans who ready to take, take orders. I mean, they come over there and mess up Israel and, but the president dared him not to. And all other countries like them, China, look at one, all that. Jump the same thing. It happened to Flint before. It happened all in Middle East and all that. Jump. Starting with you, this priesty talking and stuff with your little neck, you over there. Fight, told me all about that junkie wolf. Where are you? No, fight, wait, and all that. Hey, 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 you know, anyway, it ain't America. And what is it? And you gonna see how we deal with our America. Talking about we got other councils running, Flint on the outside, just look Korean. Oh, why you talking that junkie army? Don't, Julio, let me watch out. Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. I just want to remind the audience that I did cut you off at three o'clock, at three o'clock. At three minutes, there is no opportunity to wrap up. So can you see the clock? Can you see the clock there this time? It's working? Okay, so keep an eye on your clock. Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so my name is Melissa Swarosky. I live in the sixth ward. Um, I had, I brought my issue to, um, Ms. Tony Burns. My son was, um, John, that very older, uh, well, two of the boys and a girl. Um, he was severely hurt. He also had a fractured collarbone. Um, and I went and made a police report. I still have not heard from the police. I have not heard from a detective. I have not heard from nothing. And I'd like to know what, you know, since he's green, if he's still here. If he could please do something about this, because these kids keep, these boys keep going after my child. And I'm telling you, I will be that mother, that if I got to grab something to hit them, I will. I have no issues of protecting my child that way. But I shouldn't have to. I should be able to rely on the police to do their job. So I don't know what they're doing, but they need to get it together and or, and get more police. Do what you got to. Because the crime rate and everything else that's going on in our city is terrible. And what Neely's in there talking about crimes down, where's crime down there? I'd like to show, him to show me where the crime is down instead of talking about misinformation. Okay? So, you know, that's all I got to say for right now. Um, I do, oh, sorry. I do have a, another, uh, ha, thing that happened with the front place with my child. Um, I got also, again, everything on camera. You know, you gotta love those remote cameras, right? Yeah, I got from front, from beginning to end. They also violated my child's rights. He's only thirteen, just so you know. He was handcuffed, not read his rights, fingerprinted. And I still have not seen him court hearing, as they say. So I'm not quite sure, again, what front police are doing. I mean, let's not just worry about downtown, please. Let's worry about outside of downtown. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kawon Mack. I stay in the seventh ward. And I'm reading this about wanting to extend, uh, priority waste two years past the time. And I remember the mayor getting on the news talking about recycling bins when we being used for our houses that are falling apart. And, uh, that's what we need to deal with, not keep tabling, not keep going into the back behind closed door session. And not changing what the application requirements was for the arco funds. And I was like, call those agencies. We came down here, filled out the application about what you needed to do to your home. Now they saying siding is cosmetic, you know, blah, blah, blah. We already been mistreated because of the water poisoning. We don't wanna be mistreated by our own council. That's all I have to say.
How you doing? James Morris in the seventh ward. I got three minutes, so I'm trying to do this. Um, I write down, Flimby Road, they put a new road down, and at least a new top. And somebody at the corner of Flimby Road and, and Stewart has done tore up the road. They didn't dig a depot, but they torn up the Jerry's Center itself. I'm just wondering why this is happening. You know, we were fixing places all around the city, but it come over there where we're at, and it looks like somebody took some heavy equipment and dug out some of the road. So on behalf of the city of Flint, I'm asking all nine wards in your car, if you get a chance, ride by and do it slowly so that you don't end up over on the grass. And that is at the corner of Flimby Road and Stewart. And then, my second point before I'm already here. Um, is that a maple tree satling growing on Pearson Road? Cause it don't look like a pine tree that's coming out that hole that's been there since the mayor's first term. You know, and I, you know, I think we can get around and fix it. And we're gonna have to get some bricks and broke in that hole and kill that little innocent tree. And last, I would like to say before my sign ran out, I don't have a hat on, but if I did, I would tip my hat to say the law. Second on Michigan, because they got on the news and said, with our arco funds, we're gonna be replacing roofs and furnaces. Because we know it rains in Michigan, and it hits fire. And it's serious, and I hate warning this to my people, cause I live in Flint, I'm a Flint fan. I hate the fact that we are using excuses and not getting nothing done.
Very nice. Come in. Wow! Ooh, wait!
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charlie Berry Hope. I live at two-two-zero-five South Street. Um, we actually from R.L. here is exactly what I was looking for. I really don't think that your metal detectors stops guns. Weird. I really don't think, uh, too many people were concerned before about firearms in this room. This is my first time carrying. I usually carry a concealed. Ladies and gentlemen, that was a stupid move. Have a good night.
How you, how you talking? Time you were talking. Yeah, good evening, City Councilor. Uh, my name is Mr. Martin Homma from, uh, the first ward, and I'm part of Mr. Mays' ward. And I'm gonna start out like this, first of all, and this, uh, priesty, you might not remember, but the last time I was here, I was talking about my military service, and I don't think you'd like the way that I talked about the white man disrespecting me, you know, by coming, by not coming to the meeting and calling and saying that he needed to reschedule that. But I was trying to correlate a thought for you. It's not that I don't know, or I'm not intelligent enough to know the difference between the county government and the city government. I didn't get a chance to tell you that, because I think you got thrown off by the way I said the white man disrespecting me. And from looking at him, I don't think he ever really served in anybody's military, so I just had to throw that out there actually first. Um, then I wanted to know, um, like I've, I've, I've read some information about the arco funds and all that, you know, being for the city residents. And I called, like, maybe four agencies about that. One agency answered, I think it was the Tennessee County Network, somebody, or whatever. They said that they didn't have a process set up from city council, or wherever they needed to get it from, to actually disperse the money, you know, to the residents. I find that kind of stupid, or, you know, non-productive, or whatever. Thinking like, why would a pot of money be set up with no process set up for, you know, dispersal to the city residents? You know, and then also just bouncing back to you, Ms. Priestley. I don't think you probably really know what type of man I am. You know, I spoke to Ms. Lewis, um, you know, out in the hallway about, you know, how he was talking to me after I had sat down, you know, on your mic. And I think I threw you off when I ran back to the mic right here to talk back at you, you know, 'cause I saw you doing that. An accolade to you, uh, Council Lady Burns, you called her out, or doing that, you know, talking to me after I had sat back down. Using a process, you know, that she didn't want me to throw back at her. So, but anyway, anybody on the council can explain, you know, why is it also that, who is this group? Ask me, somebody, ask the Capitol, whoever, why are they paying three point two million dollars to manage the money that you, uh, are supposed to be dispersal to the citizens? I mean, somebody kind of explain that for me if you could. And then really, I remember when I was overseas, we had a war, you know, in Germany, I was over there serving in the military. And, uh, we had a wall, all through Germany, blocking off us from the East Germans and the Russians and all of that over there. And, um, I'm trying to correlate this and say this. When I called about the funds, the arco funds and all that stuff, you know, being dispersed to the residents, I got moved for war talk, war talk.
Thank you.
To the council, my name is Reverend Freeland Fralkell Jr. And I reside at two-fourteen East Pulaski, four-eight-five, and now I'm in the third ward. I've been coming down several times and addressing you all. Someone made a statement some years ago that the chickens have come home to roost. And when I look at each and every one of you all, elected officials, two sides of our municipal work in this city, and as a resident of this city, tax-paying person in this city, a respectable person in this city, trying to live in this city and hold up this city. I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of how you all are doing my business. Or I wish I could trade places with some of you all and take care of the business of this city. But what has been beating up the home? We have been fattening frogs for state for years. It's not you, it's not the mayor. We are being dictated to by outside. And I'm sick and tired of it. The charter, everybody refers to the charter, who's right and who's wrong. What about the abusmen? I wanna answer from you all tonight. What about the abusmen? Which, what I understand, was inducted in the charter to help check and balance the council and the mayor. We wouldn't have this problem if the abusmen were active and doing their job. And we, they were straightened out. I wish I had that power. But as a citizen, I can't do nothing but sit here, stay at home, buy me some popcorn, and laugh at how y'all take care of business. But it's, it's ludicrous, y'all. I just heard, Ms. Priestley, "Oh, we just lost, it just cost us a thousand dollars." Well, if you were straight up and flat right and knew what's right, we wouldn't lose no money. We would be making money. We stood before this council, the North Flint Food Market, and you denied our request for money on the North End. But no, I'm against my brother. They took care of yours. So straighten up and fly right.
Mary Wright, two-two-eight West Patterson is where I reside. I was here last week about my roof. And while I was sitting here, my daughter's bedroom ceiling caved in from the rain. I just wanna know how y'all able to vote on taking care of this room for fifty thousand or seventy-five, or whatever y'all see it cost, before y'all able to get the residents taken care of. Our ceilings are falling in, and y'all sitting in here lack of luxury, and somebody that did the job, and y'all ain't paid for yet. They bill y'all after. Y'all need to get to decide, when you get work done, you get an estimate, you get to decide who you want to do the work at a lower price, normally. But y'all just gotta go with whatever now. That's money that's coming out of our fund, I'm sure. But we are letting our roofs cave in, because we need some help. Y'all had to fill out paperwork. Paperwork been filled out, now I'm telling, I'm here, it ain't no money. Where the money at? I'm glad y'all decided to listen to the citizens and allow us to speak before y'all went back and put us on hold. And I ask y'all to not keep putting us on hold with the arco fund.
I'm Pastor Timothy Hicks. Address is one-seven-zero-eighty-second Street. My church is also at thirty-two-oh-two Flushing Road. So I'm in two different districts. And feel like I've been bamboozled in both of them. Because so many times, we come up on the short end of the stick when it comes to the community being supported. And churches have taken the biggest hit out of the COVID and everything else. Everybody made provisions for nail salons, you made provisions for barber shops, you made provisions for a lot of things. But there were no provisions made for churches. And churches were hit harder than any other organization in the entire nation. Because if the people don't come, if they can't make it to church, guess what? The church don't survive. But yet, but yet, everybody else can go on, businesses are gonna be, businesses are gonna make money. Businesses are gonna survive, because people have something that they need. And so therefore, they're gonna survive. But churches, if people don't make it to the church, if they don't send a tide, if they don't send an offering in, then the churches can't make it. But guess what? The bills keep coming in. And so therefore, we wonder why we've got so many buildings closing now, so many churches closing now, so many pastors leaving and going south? Yes, because people are not supported. The same way it is with all the different, uh, grants. Yeah, we, we applied for grants just like everybody else did, but you know what they turned out and gave us? They gave us loans. A church can't, if I, if I need a loan, then why do I need another bill on top of the bills I already have? We need to know that there's something from avenues out here that say, "Hey, we care about you as well."
Hi, y'all, council members. My name is Donce Bello. I'm from Bay Harbor, Flint. Um, I just came over here today, cause I want to try to stop some of you. Stop being a favoritism and stop being a, you see the program now, it's not even illusion no more. Y'all shouldn't even hide the trick behind your back. I watch this administration ignore accountability in the people. Like Ms. Winfrey Carter said, the ones y'all work for. These, these are voices y'all supposed to listen to, not attorneys. They sold us out years ago, Mike. They been sold us out. Our justice system failed us. Our council members failed us. Our administration failed us. We don't got no one to turn. We not asking y'all for nothing. I'm not asking y'all for nothing no more, 'cause it's not getting nowhere. We have debates on the floor because there's criminal activity going on. When you say federal fraud, that's a criminal activity. That's criminal. When you say, uh, false pretense, like Mr. May said, mismanagement government funds, that's federal activity. I just need the system to work for everybody, like you work on me. If they got their second amendment right to bring their guns in here, I'm not saying, y'all talking about threats? Have you been shot fucking? Yeah, let's talk about that. This, this, this is a ridiculous, y'all, and, and I'm supposed to be the loose one. I'm supposed to be the one that's not got it all. But I'm looking at y'all, and I feel something on you. Hey, how y'all doing today? Man, it's been a rough one, but, um, I just wanna reiterate to me that if y'all can spend fifteen million to tear down houses, why y'all can't spend twenty-one million to help people fix their houses? It's real simple. Ms. Priestley, when you said at the last meeting, y'all gotta do something, I'm gonna hear it in a right of resolution. I've been telling you ever since, you've been sitting up there to write a resolution to help the people. And you got four of your friends that don't vote with you if you write it up the right way? So while y'all writing something up, just have to, just do what the people say. This, this, you know, and then another thing, a problem that I, the main problem I have. Y'all got what, two minutes to address everybody that came up here and some public struggle? And then y'all have ten minutes to argue a point of order. That's kind of a balance. Y'all should have at least ten minutes to address the public. Y'all have two minutes to address the public and ten minutes to argue, and y'all shouldn't be arguing. Because Mr. May is be germane most of the time. Sometime I had to do a little figuring, but he's smart enough to know how to go in between the lines. So I'm gonna trust the judgment that he do be germane. But I won't give you a perfect instance of why we here and got this security camera and all of this, what happened. Eric Mays asked Ms., uh, Ms. Lewis, did she not hear Eric Mays pointing information when he went to Mr. Pfeiffer and said, "Did he mean to say Alamo?" You wanted to give him a warning for that. And it was so germane, because she was throwing an issey fit. She was throwing a fit, and he, she had it. That was the most popular point of information I ever heard, and you wanted to give him a warning for that? So, all the people been coming with this saying the same thing. Don't be like your person that resigned and say, "Just because we don't see eye to eye." It's not for y'all to see eye to eye with us. It's for y'all to have ears and us to have eyes, and then y'all do action. Simple as that. All y'all have power to write resolutions and help the people. Just do it.
Yeah, that's true.
Just do it. Thank you.
Good evening. My first name is Frederick, last name Brown. I was at twelve-nineteen O.B.A. in the right. I'm gonna be real brief. I just wanna know, is anything the city is going to do about over two hundred people losing their homes? Um, due to this foreclosure, so it's kind of brand new to, uh, to everybody. I would have heard it's never spoken, so it's here. A lot of people got a lot of questions, and we haven't got no answers. Um, I'm coming out here today to speak for everybody on the whole. And then myself, I have a unique situation that I would like to explain to somebody sometime or some point. But right now, I'm just asking the city, what is it that you guys can do to help over two hundred people? If it's something that could be done, could you please help us?
First of all, we're doing a little talk about the member vote. You know, he's one of you councilmen. And members vote. But you know what? We not getting the job done. Sit up here and argue amongst yourselves. That should be done in the past, or we might be doing it all. You don't bring your garbage out here for everybody to be a joke with. That country. Point of order. Come on, get it together. You gonna sit up here and argue with each other? You gonna sit up here and argue with each other? See, people want their money. And they want their money. They not just here to see y'all win over and argue amongst each other. They not. And if you believe in me, what I'm saying, let them know. Talking about somebody doing a lawnmower, it's a scramble, it'll turn out. It don't need to be done in here. Go argue with each other. Build it, whatever passed. Because it's crazy. We got guns, we got councilmen talking about the crimes in the city as well. But you promoted yesterday about people coming up here with guns. He promoted it. But you said, "We got crimes, people shoot people in the north end and taking police officers there." But I ain't got a bomb in there. Each one of you, I think y'all are good councilmen. Arguing amongst yourselves. I can't even tell about you doing the right thing, and y'all sitting up here holding a seat. The elected official, they ain't getting it done. I don't know if Ms. Priestley, you might hear things. But damn it, take kids stuff you in the back room before you come out here and air your dirty laundry. Get it together.
Good evening. My name is God. Bishop Stephen B.
Take your time.
Now, I cried like a baby when I seen my mother Marla the kid.
Yes.
Death. When he got assassinated. Now, I cried, "Oh, no, why did this happen?" Because it was unjust, just like John McKinney and Martha Kitty. From the old school. My history is past April, April the tenth, when I was hospitalized. I died three times on an operating table. God saved me. He put me to the ground and he rocked me. He said, "My son, you gotta work today." I said, "Father, whatever, whatever it take." And I'm like, "Well, I got to do it." He said, "Yes, you will do it, son. If you love me, you'll do it. Oh, yes, sir." He got the highest military, bigger than man's military, bigger than Putin or Putin. Russians go to have the biggest military they use. But besides, what's happening here in the ghetto, in Red Town, Chicago, Detroit, New York? All these ghettos that the dirt wars and left for the poor people killing up each other, it's crazy. It went monstrous. And we killing up each other. This time for the seats. God don't like it. If you get a chance, pick your holy word up tonight before you go to sleep. And now reset nine thirty-four. And the verse go, "Oh, thy God, oh, thy God, oh, thy God." Vengeance belong here. All power is up there. Look, up there. So we have the hallway, remember what we do to others, come back home, put a few in the back. And also, Malcolm X, Mandela, they did this. Now, that was cruel. They locked Mandela, they keep his mouth shut. I ain't saying no name, but I know who they responsible for that. Eric Mays, you don't have none to worry about. Don't fear. God got this. We don't have that to fear. We don't move behind. In a way, I love y'all and y'all a present man.
Hi, my name is Beverly D. X. David. I've sat here for a couple of weeks and haven't said anything. And, um, the Dale Lewis is a killer. If you notice, you never heard anything about threatening until Pfeiffer said his family was being harmed. Y'all need to get that character out of her seat and start doing something for the people. I'm all evil worthy. I'm at four hundred and eighty-five figures. Only need five minutes. She's got to go. And I'm not ashamed to stand up here and say it. Um, Murphy had to be there to say, "He don't have a problem with the things out there." He had, that's fine and well. But when I said to him, you, you, I'm low class to him. And I said to him, he like them little boys. The very next week, he brought his thesis, his suit to everybody else for me. But to tell you about me, if you want me, I'm like Pfeiffer. I live seven forty-four East Philadelphia. Anytime they wanna come, I'm there. Have a blessed day.
My name is A.C. Gilson. I reside in the state of the respectfully, in the second ward. And I see that the second ward representative is not here again. So we're without representation. I just want to say that the power does rest in the people. It's a government for the people, it's a government of the people, and it's a government by the people. It does rest in the people. Now, what you, you know what? They come up and quote scriptures. I can preach it just that every time. God asks Moses, "What you got in your hand?" Use it. I'm telling, I'm telling the people, "What you got in your hand?" Use it. Quit complaining, and what you got in your hand, use it. I'm gonna talk about, uh, I remember the lady Chris Delmaroni. One thing Chris said, "Those who stay will pay." And a small little residence, eighty thousand, are paying for this big dream of politicians that we cannot afford. I want to say vote against the priority waste contract. I don't care if the union wants it. Guess what? Those who stay will pay. Vote against it. Anything that got opera on unless it's for the people. Putting roofs on houses, windows, furnaces. If it ain't for us, guess what? Don't vote for it. I heard somebody said, "Go in the back room." Democracy is not in the back room. Democracy is right here before the people. You know, years ago, they used to go in the back room, smoke cigarettes and skip cigars and make deals. We ain't cut no deals in the back room. Whatever you all got to say, say it before the people. And Ms. Mashack, I want to remind you, you gotta be careful how you vote. You work for, uh, down there, uh, the school, down the butt school where it is, and a former employee down there works for the city. Don't get conflicted. Don't get, don't get conflicted because the people are watching. Don't get conflicted now when you vote. Don't try to be slick or as slimy as a slate or slick as a snake. Because the people are watching. You came in the seventh ward and they just love you. Now they ready to get rid of you. Say, "Huh."
Is there anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I believe, uh, one tough team. I got one question. Same question I've been asked ever since I've been down here. How many people have been paid off the water, you know, Benny, besides the lawyers? And let me put it the way, can y'all give us an update on the water? Maybe that's the work I should. Every time I've been down here, been the same question. And one y'all have answered it. So give us an answer tonight.
Gina Buster, um, eighth ward. My first question is, where is our money? Where is that Oprah money? I remember when Councilman Mays, they was on a humstuck about where the money was. We were knew stealing money. He brought Mr. Hannity in and itemized it. We saw where every single penny went. Why we can't see where this Oprah money going? What's up with these secret meetings and you ain't on this royalty or you ain't on this fraternity, you get nothing? This makes no sense. That is a joke. I just went outside and came back in. Ain't nobody standing there manning, manning that thing. That's a joke. I went, I went outside on purpose. Went to my car. I grabbed cigarettes, not a gun, but some people go grab guns out of their cars. We, we know. But bottom line is, where is the money? We want to see an itemized list. Thank you to the three people who want to give the public, I'm sorry, the three council people who want to give the public a chance to speak and not keep making us wait. Who make their boss wait to talk? Some of the decisions y'all do, they right. Y'all never forgot who the boss. I'm so thankful that my eighth ward councilman, the scene of life. Cause he been blinded, ooh wee, it runs deep. It's called being a narcissist. This administration reminds me of a narcissist society. They never wrong. And we the people never right. And we don't supposed to deserve nothing or ask for anything. If we doing some problem and it get personal, you getting blocked by city council people because you just want to know, "Can I get a roof? Can I get some railings on my, on my porch?" And Mr. Pfeiffer, quick question. Can you give us an update in the eighth ward? They been, I've been over there six months. My daughter's a nutritioner. We didn't got side swipe, those cones on Appleton and Bass Light. I know, I think some, I see a whole bunch of energy companies there. Uh, but I don't know what they're doing, but that, not only is it an eyesore, it's very, very dangerous. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Davis Kennedy, and I live in the seventh ward. I lived in the seventh ward for over twenty years. I come down here and I listen. And I listen. I go back to my community. And I speak to my neighbors about things that I believe that are not right. That things that I see that we should do something about. I only use the word apartheid. And understanding, you have to know a little history about apartheid and what it means. I'm not using apartheid because of the different politics that sits on that board. I'm using apartheid because they will not justify their positions. I live in the seventh ward. And I've seen people come and go. However, we have two different seventh wards. And understand this, I'm gonna put this in. We have a northern seventh ward, which I live in, and we have a southern seventh ward, which need roofs. They need paint. They need their front porch done. They need their windows done. However, let me tell you, who didn't get nobody in the seventh ward was the one that was south of the seventh ward, south of sixty-nine. They didn't get a quarter. So let me tell you, who was getting money, who was being advertised, who was being promoted, was the non, the nonpart of the seventh ward. The culture there who I live. When I ran for city council, I went around the south of sixty-nine and took pictures for Tony Burns. I ran with her. I took pictures of the houses that I saw, the trees on their roofs. I took pictures of all the debris I saw. Oh, but guess what? Nobody took a picture anymore. They were appointed. They were appointed, and then they said, "I have a nonprofit and I owe three hundred thousand dollars." And I said, "Guess what? I want to see what you got going for three hundred thousand." If I'm mad as hell, don't worry about it. Cause I'm not gonna get over it. My time is up. Thank you.
Is there anyone else like you at Rosse Castle? Is there anyone else? Seeing no movements, time to council response?
Yeah, ma'am.
Mr. Mays, go ahead.
A lot of interesting speakers spoke. And somebody said, "You can't address all of them in two minutes." And I won't. The gentleman by the house, we exchanged nothing. Ms. Mercedes, keep watching that seventh ward. Mr. Gilson, you spoke about our funds. And then the third ward, you spoke about our funds. That's the hot topic. But I want to demonstrate something to the people. And Mr. Green, you put your time in here to say, you got the right to demand that we do right. You got that right. I got respect for you. But I'm gonna spend this last minute of the two talking about a guy who I was scared of when he, when I seen that automatic whip. You guys are white men with automatic whips, I get scared of you. And some chases. Black ones too. They come in the corner, still look, they got open hair. But I know that. I know what he would do. And he did it well. Down at twelve, I'm gonna see if they interview you. Because we knew it was a political game being played on this council as it relates to metal detectors and all of this hype that Mr. Dale Lewis helped create. But she didn't do it by herself. She conspired with Neely, the city attorney, and the police department, in my opinion. And then, then he walked.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
I was just getting started.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like this? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
There was a lot of speaker. Mr. Mays, you might not be scared, but he's scared, Jesus, of me. There was, there was a lot of counter, a lot of comments from the public. Um, like Mr. Mays said, there's too many to address each one of them, but, uh, was it Frederick? Um, I'm sorry, I didn't break your name down, but I don't know if there's anything that we can do. Uh, I'm open to hear any kind of, um, plan or any suggestions on how we can help. But I want to enlighten the public. So there's a Supreme Court ruling that, you know, if you, if your house is worth a hundred thousand and you owe ten thousand, twenty thousand in back taxes, you're supposed to get the extra money. you're supposed to get the, the extra money. So the, the corruption that we're dealing with is when they lump some in bulk sale the way that they did so that they don't have to buy back that amount. So that's what a lot of people don't understand, is that bulk sale was to take the money that you would've got for the excess value that you have in your home from the taxes. Now they can't prove how much they sold your house for. So that's how they circle around and absolutely decimate the community by that. So, um, I'm an adamant objector and I think that the land bank and everybody else, the land bank and the treasurer have done no good in this community in decades. And I will continue to state that on the record and thank you if you mind.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first I would like to thank all of the public speakers. Um, thank you for being engaged in the process. Thank you for your insight, your comments, your concerns. They are well taken. I'm listening to each and every one of you. And I do wanna say, um, the ARPA funds, ooh wee. It's been, it's been a struggle and, and I stand with the residents. You guys deserve, um, your money. But the ARPA funds, they were sent here to, um, take care of the needs of the residents. Okay? And to even put just five million dollars, um, for home improvements? That's a slap in the face. It's a slap in the face. And I stand with the residents, we need to increase that amount. Now, I don't know what's going on with Habitat of Humanities. Madam Chair, through you to Divina. Divina, can we send a referral? Uh, I wanna know the status of what's going on with that. Because I'm sure we already vote on Habitat, right? And we need to, we need to know the status. Because if they're telling residents that they're out of money.
That's exactly what they're telling us.
That, that's a problem. That's a problem. So I would like to find out. And to the young man that came, uh, before us to speak about the, the houses. I've been researching that, I've even, um, spoke to, um, one of the county commissioners that sit on the land bank board, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Um, thanks to all the residents, our time is quick. I wanna speak to Melissa. If, not if, what happened to your son, if we got action on someone who did not have a weapon, no injuries and lightning speed? If your son's collarbone been broken, we should have lightning speed, you know, with that as opposed to someone taking a picture and no weapon. It's how they're prioritizing things. That's a problem. I will be calling, uh, Chief Green again to talk about this, to see what's being done. Uh, also, that street up here's a road that everyone talks about, that's in the middle. Believe it or not, it actually acquired. Uh, it is a gate that from, um, it's called, it's a flip park lane, it's what it's called. Uh, Douglas Lane. They have to constantly go in, into that because all of the debris that comes through there. And so they're supposed to be getting a gate to access it when there's so much debris that comes through. So I have inquired about that. So I spoke with our engineer at the car company and they explained that to me. That they have to frequently go in and clean it out so it doesn't, um, so sewers over across the street of Pearson Road don't flood it. So they have to, it's basically just like a clean out basin to, to clear everything out. Um, Unbusman Pastor Thrill, I don't know if he left. Uh, they are, they are looking to hide, they're working with the HR department. Their meetings are online, uh, so they're in the process, I believe, going over the application so they can go over the application, um, to, to hire someone. And they are working with HR. And that's about my two minutes, I can't get into anything else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers, it was a lot of guys that, um, spoke some good, um, information. So, um, Pastor Timothy Hicks, it was good to see you, that was my pastor, he was my baptized mate. He moved twenty years ago, I'm like, wow, it's been a long time. When I first got into going to church and stuff, so it's good to see, um, Pastor with Christian love over that Russell Road. What I did do is I'm putting a referral in to the, um, administration to see what we can do. Cause like you said, there are a lot of churches out there that they didn't get no kind of, um, support when they came out to support them with the water curses. They had to shut down, so I'm putting a referral in to see what we can do on there. Just to update the residents that was going on in the Third Ward. Just October seventeenth, we had a meeting at the Penn Public Library, the Penn Housing Commission. So just to let y'all know that, um, they got awarded the designation of choice neighborhood from Stewart to Cotton Road to Dupont to Branch Road. So they're going on planning where they're planning their meeting, their next meeting is November the ninth at four o'clock, PM River Park Apartments. So for those that wanna get involved, come out. Um, they had a good meeting at the, um, Penn Public Library, they get inputted in here, um, and to either build some houses or renovate River Park Apartments, we don't know, uh, to the residents. So I was encouraging y'all to get involved with that, captain charities on Stewart and SAG and all, they're trying to build some investment houses, three point five million dollar project over there. So I just kinda wanna update the community on some of the things that's going on in the Third Ward and I don't really have that opportunity to express what's going on. There's a lot of moving parts in being the city council over in the Third Ward. It's a lot of great things going on. As things come up, I'll continue to, um, bring it up and update you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other? Any other? Seeing none, I'm gonna close pub council response. Um, except, uh, energy motion to go into closed session. It's been moved, is there support for? Alright, it's been moved, the car's the second, if you go to closed session, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll cover. Ms. Murphy Carter? Yes. Ms. Murphy? Yes. Ms. Shad? Yes. Harper?
Yes.
Yes. About a six, yes?
I am one foot. I could be all in top, not one.
We are now going into closed session.
No, next one's green, so I'm gonna be wearing probably a white shirt.
Spend ten thousand dollars for that thing back there. He said it, that's what they said.
Garrett series, three grand, that would be brand new, new series.
He said ten thousand, don't you? Well, he might have put five in his pocket, the same five, that's more than he's due.
I know, I know. That's what I told Trevor, that's what I told, that's not an offense, man. It's illegal to hold an offense.
Can the council go in closed session so the residents won't be here all day? Can the council go in closed session so the residents won't be here all day?
Get on the other side of that. Look at this.
Hi Judy.
Look at this.
Hi Judy. Judy tried to give me a finger. He vi, she violated my rights.
Ariel. Ariel, come here. Come here Ariel. Have a top camera. If people wanna know what you think about the, uh, the open carry of the weapons. Yeah, talk, uh, right here, right here. Snap weapons. Stand back, right here, go up there, stand back a little bit.
Hey. I'm not, but you, you know, for the open carry, she said, they've been glaring on there ever since thirty years ago. From Edmonton on, on Second on Street. You see that old pop church rip, blowed up? That's gaslighting. That's where, that's my trail. They sent me over on, on Delaware Street and they, the only body that broke that up was Julio, the brown people, a Mexican. He, he's faced eight white policemen and told, and, and told me to get in his house, he put in his house, he didn't, this is going on right now. That's just, this boy right here, he the only one got, got, he gotta shoot that gun up one time in the air. He scared to pull the trigger, just, he don't have to shoot at nobody. That's all he can do, and that, everybody in the home world. Wait, wait till they do, get out, get them hunches in. And make, be amazed, I'll go, I mean, hey, I, hey, you don't talk, I'd rather do something, don't go like, jump back, you're drunken, drive by generations, you ain't nothing but, just like now, watch this. Just keep on watching, keep it real.
Okay, he said, cut it off.
Wait, 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 next social distance, never y'all.
Yeah, that's the police right there, stay away from me, Trevor.
Oh no.
I'm coming on camera. Go over that way, Trevor. I need Trevor to go that way, I'm still black in America.
You guys wanna know what happened when I walked through that little truck? The nice pudgy cop, I don't know his name, but he's a little, he's a little extra weight. He smiles and goes, that's nice. I go, you don't need a cinder? Do you have anything else on him? Yes, sir. Oh, can I see your concealed? Yes, sir. Well, he held it. He didn't do shit. Obesure did. Just wait. I'm bringing the other one with me.
The other one? That's the one.
This is actually Croatian, this is European. I'm gonna bring the ring on next. I'm gonna come to a ring. There's a reason why I haven't put my hooker, hooker hook on the bank switch. But I think it's got time for me to get home. There's, you have a smoke for red? Uh, except, there you go. Really? Call in the counselor from the Sixth Ward.
Nicole, you standing up here, right? Gonna go down, white smoke cigarette.
He's gonna hang with people.
One for this, one for me.
Oh, that was, uh, the one questioning.
So any municipal, the, the, this, this.
Just this little parade. Uh, do I not?
No, no.
I'm proud of you.
It's so. No.
I think that was.
No.
Definitely.
Oh. That's it, man. That's the air. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Say goodbye. Hey. See you later. I think this is a good. She didn't always. I think it's one of them. Um, the work. I don't know. This is just. That might shed hair. Yeah. It's kind of like. I don't know this thing. And I don't know. I'm rather attached to all these guys. I usually. I can have. Sure. I think I'll cheer. I had here. Yeah. But yeah, I think it's. I mean, you know, that's. It's close to those. Yours perfect. But. Everybody. Talk about her so bad. It's not crazy that's doing that. I'm trying to. I'm trying to get. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. This is. Yeah. It's the. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. I'm trying to. Like. She wanted. Things more. She asked me. So. It's. Yeah. 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 I mean, I think. No, I mean, it's. This way. I mean, I. I mean, things I can't. This. I'm. You're. I think. You. It's possible. She's. I think. I'm. To the church. Today. Yeah. Yeah. Just think of. Yeah. She said. But. This. This day. That's about it. See, there. You just do the same thing with yourself. And if you know. Come with that. There. It's all. And you know. Because. It's. I'm. It's. I was. I'm. Document. I don't. This is really great. It's. It's just a big. It's a lot. Yeah. And like this. That. So we don't. Here's. You know. I heard. For any guy. I'm. I just. So she. Can't. I said. There's. Yeah. It's like a. Little. More. Yeah. Yeah. That's why I said. I see. So. It's. We. Yeah. I love. Yeah. Yeah. How you do? No. Stay. I see. I'm. I mean. And what it demonstrate that they work. Because. They. I'm. I. Baby. I think. Right. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. So. Yeah. See. So. I have. It's just. I mean. I'm. We. So. We. So. We're. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So. First. We're. 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 Times. As. A lot. The. Depression. We have. They say. They are. Show. As. They. They're. 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 Reasonable combinations. Maybe. In. Some. So. If you suffer from depression and or anxiety in the. Place. Reasonable. Combinations. That you can request. In. That. Your job. Is successful. When your anxiety and depression begins to create. The ten issues at one. You can request. A. Example. With. Maybe. You can request. Or. You can ask. Or. Allow. You. Want. Or. Request. If your condition is caused by concentration issues. You can ask. No. You can. So. 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 You. You. Experience. Engineering. You're trying to. As. They. Perhaps. Data. This. This. For. She. She. Yeah. No. Not. We. New. It is. Replicating. They. Training. It is. Now. Starting. Tasks. And. That is. It's. Another. Race. Training. We. I just. Experience. Necessarily. Take. You. You. Yeah. So. Was. Yeah. Maybe. Well. That bad when I came. You. Sixty three. I'm. I'm. So. I. It's. A little bit. But. That's. Right. I want. Like. I'm. You. Yes. Nothing. Easy. Done. Check. It's. Talking. Talking. Now. I know. I'm. You're. We. They. It's. So. So. Yeah. I. I. I'm. Okay. She. Far. So. So. I don't. I. 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 Last. I. I. Somebody went to the. And. I. 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 So. What. What did. Where. And. She's. That's. Oh. I. 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 I'm. Yeah. Yeah. I think. I. It. Also. Fantastic. So. That's. 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 Oh. It's. How. And. Tell. And. Maybe. Like. I. I don't. Maybe. I. I. So. You have. You ain't. Hi. You said. You ain't going. I.
Did you ever. Like. Did you get any footage. Of. That. I think. You did. How you missed. That. Story. When the lady get up. We all. She. Car. But I didn't. When you. I. Tell. That. He. That. Game. Tell. That. He. Long. Just. Then. I. Then.
Oh. No. Yeah.
Yeah.
You're. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six. Or. All. High. Well. Yes. And. Then. Home. Then. 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 After. Time. You. You. Okay.
Like. Character. They. They.
You. Yeah. Well.
Yeah. 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 I don't. I. Don't. Turn. I know.
My. She's. It's. It's. She. And. She. She. And. I.
Yeah. Right. Right. And. See. We.
Yeah. So. She. She.
That's. So. Flat.
I. Yeah. Yeah.
Well. From. She. She. Over. And.
I. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. They. Have. Because. She. Yeah.
What. Huh?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I. I. I.
Yeah. I. Yeah. I. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I. Yeah. So. I.
Yeah. Everybody. Yeah.
Yeah.
Say. You. 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 Me. Call.
I'm. We. She. She. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
If. If. Uh.
One. I. Yeah. Yeah. Well. Yeah. Well.
I'm. Yeah.
So. Yeah.
Possibly.
For. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You. Yeah. I. I. Yeah. 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 We. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Basically.
Out. There. Well.
So. Yeah. Yeah. That's.
Something like that. We did a lot of like. Cam. And.
Everybody. Like. I know.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Name.
McDonald's.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. Oh.
Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. So. Yeah. Without. They. Have. They. I. What.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't. Get. We. Man. 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 I got. Man.
And. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Nobody. Yeah.
From. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Mark. I.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. Yeah. Yeah. I. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. I was. Like. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'm. 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 Yeah. But. Yeah. Yeah. I'm.
About.
She. Just. Yeah. That's. She.
I. Yeah. Yeah. But.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
They all. Yeah. 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 They all. They come on.
Three. Oh. Yeah. I. Yeah. 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 But. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now would you want to go or somebody? That you know for a long time?
To do what?
I just did all of that trying to come and talk to him and he didn't come to talk to me.
How about you do? Plane to go to Vegas to file a petition.
So I didn't know. I didn't know what was happening. So when I read that, I said, "Come on."
Listen, you hoping they ain't smoking?
He said, "That's the same." I'm on the table. You just say, "You had, you had," she passed me out, same thing.
My husband turned me into a sadist.
Nice talking to you.
Mr. Turner. Why we got two attorneys here tonight? Why are you here and attorneys young people?
Uh, he was here to do the, to give a presentation for the closed session. He said, "And we do a rotation." The city has five attorneys. And so, he's the point of chief of our systems. But we have a rotation as to who's covering counsel.
Okay, okay. Okay, I got it.
I heard, uh...
And watch here, man. Cause I got a good time, watch time, you know. Stop.
You don't need to be sitting in the car. All I mean, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna watch that.
Two minutes, they gonna go, oh, she don't mind.
No, she don't mind.
Boy, see, that girl walk. I just like the people over there, they, they won't, nobody even say a word.
Actually, it's incorrect.
We don't know how to, we don't know how to act. It's like the Germans are not listening. He dropped it at the letter. Somebody else. Yeah, I don't work up from there. I'm saying, everybody, everyone around, everyone else, even this, this stuff. This stuff, or a sign. The one thing to forget, what to do. Like this, 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 you're in this state. Audience, audience, you're in this state. You been in this state, you, you, you all that stuff. Still in your head, all the world, anyone, my mother, my mother. Big left, not very well, never right now. Two hundred and six, Jordan, make it jump, like you know, she went, like you know.
You watching, you talking, y'all were just saying? Ah, okay, okay. Y'all subscribe to Mercy, that's it. That's so sweet, happy, what's wrong with you? Shit, I need to have y'all on the show tomorrow. Y'all pass on the, the promise to come here? Well, none of them would need that for you. You say you had to come see it yourself? None of them. Not a, none of them.
It's different watching it on something on a Facebook that is actually being heard. You see the atmosphere, it's not, it's not, that's always amazing, not maybe they see. He asked me the other day, he thought it was, he'd be one because he had a couple songs. I never heard of him, he had it. I think I missed the whole thing.
You can get this anyway, put it off, off base.
It's like the bucket, he'll never tell the truth. That's all, so they can keep their jobs, not tell the truth. He went from, from Nigeria. And it went on down, I was just, ah. That's like he was coming, it's, it's gone, it's gone. You would stop there, off everywhere else.
Five, Jim. Five, one, four, nine, eight, ten.
See? I ain't getting this, yeah, stay off the red horse. They don't, they leave no red horse alone.
So Sarah shake like Trump?
Order, order in the chamber, we need y'all to take y'all seats and get to work now. Ariel, call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order, Ariel. Call the meeting to order.
Hey, then let me bring it back to me, I'm gonna read the results. So I'm reading the recycling partnership, I'm gonna change this in this letter dated October seventeenth. This talking about having either. Y'all might be familiar with that letter and stuff about having. Somebody's request for two thousand twenty-four. It don't take me all the way up to two thousand twenty-eight. Tell me if I'm right or wrong.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, yeah, I'm gonna have it go ahead and discuss that.
So, if I understand correctly, the letter that was sent to all of you, um, board was provided by, uh, uh, would have been from the recycling partnership? And that was their stance on what needs to happen, we're gonna move forward with the grant? So your question, your question is about the letter then, or is it about what's actually on there?
No, I was not gonna go through that two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, if I don't have to, I'm not gonna go to two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay.
Now, am I reading that right, day one twenty-four?
Thank you, Mrs. May, say any other discussion, first round?
Let's go and make sure it's what it's like, they'll bring me that text.
Mr. May, just go ahead and go ahead and say something, please.
Um, through you two, um, five. Why, um, was it a necessity to just extend the contract versus, um, this was concerning to me? Um, you guys is trying to extend this contract versus just putting it out to bid? Usually something of this big ticket cost will go out for bid. That rules coming up, why, why not just go and put it off to bid? Versus knowing the way I think, and then, um, that's my first question. The other concern I have is, I have not received, well, we have not, unless Piper have the, um, councilman, Piper happened, he ain't sharing with us, but he requested to see was there going to be an increase in, um, garbage collections for the special assistance for garbage? Unless he had it, I haven't seen if that's something I was looking for, um, it's just, we don't have it, we, we needed. The other request, whether y'all like it or not, I requested to get the estimate cost, how much it will cost to work in that, the garbage and how much it is. We never got any figure, um, with that, but you guys, even the union, um, president, you know, they did a press conference with the mayor and he want us to vote for this. So just like the union president want us to vote for this, we want the request that we ask to be honored, so that we can make the best decision when it comes down to knowing how much taxes are we wanting to be asking the residents? Cause okay, y'all giving us some free carts on one end through a grant that we gotta accept, but we also gotta accept this contract for five, six years or however long you guys go, without putting it out for bid. And usually things like this of this magnitude, we succincted when the priority and Republican was one headed up on each other, when Karen Weaver was the mayor about who was gonna get the bid?
Yep.
So now it unchanged from that, so now you guys are going to do an extension, I'll be just do an extension and I don't even put it out for bid. Make it make sense, yeah, so, one question, if y'all can answer, um, is where is the, um, request that councilman Piper requested for, how much is the residents' taxes gonna be raised due to the shortfall that we may be in the garbage collection on record? If we do this contract, then when is the, um, resolution coming to be like, okay, oh, I forgot to tell y'all, we need to raise our rates? So are we promoting to the residents, oh, we at Jeopardy, you losing some trash cans, I could buy my own trash can and my own recycling here. If I go, it'll say we from having to get my, um, garbage, um, collected, because, I mean, um, taxes raised, because y'all giving me some free, cause sometimes free ain't always free, on one end, it's free, y'all asking me, you go raise my taxes, and that's what, that's not what y'all really being honest with us, just tell us how much it's gonna cost. I'm not saying we all support it or don't support it, but what, where's the numbers? The other one is where's the estimate on how much it costs to bring it in-house? How much it will cost to give us four or five garbage trucks, so we ain't gotta go through this four or five years or not? Cause other than that, we gonna be beholden to contractors, um, being, um, whatever, they make the charges, whatever. And when is we all on our own stuff, just look what the emergency manager did to us. So, I, I don't have that figure, and I'm going to deal to my colleagues, you guys, I know they gonna ask some questions, but those are my concerns, why I'm reluctant to just wanna say yes and vote for this? Not cause no union president said, go vote.
Yes, Mr. Mur, Mr. Murphy.
He's a house, cause it's.
That's twice, that's twice, this is your recording.
Um, first and foremost, um, I, I, I think that the priority waste is doing a great job, I have had, and, and, you know, there, there, I haven't had any complaints, uh, whatsoever, as far as I know, they are doing a great job, my other colleagues have been speaking, so your services so far, uh, have been good. Um, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr., um, sorry, still, Mr. Moore. Last time we spoke, you were gonna do some kind of presentation for us?
Uh, yes, that's actually later on, on the agenda.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, that's a special, okay, perfect, then you'll have the numbers that Mr. Murphy was speaking about?
I don't have the numbers for bringing it in-house, I just received the data, uh, today, and while the super, they were should be a great job, it's still in a very rough state, it's not in a format where I can present to you or.
But you have the numbers for the other projected deficit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, perfect.
How much did he use?
That's gonna, we're expected to vote and move this forward before we hear those numbers later in the meeting? I'm pardon, I'm sorry, we're, we're, we're expected to move this before we hear the numbers in the meeting?
I have some, trying to all.
Okay. Um, and I guess we can, we can, uh, make a motion to, uh, move that forward or extend time and have that debate during this. Um, Mr. Murphy, to your point three, is that a three?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm interested to see the numbers and see how we're gonna pay for this, uh, or what the projected deficit is. But I keep hearing over and over that it's just a great deal, we gotta move forward, it's a great deal, we gotta move forward. If it's such a great deal, why do we have to allocate two million ARPA to pay for it?
Come on, Matt. Our book money.
I, I just, I just, if, if we're getting free carts and we're worried about two million dollar, four point three million dollar grant that is helping the community, why do we have to backstop it with two million of our books? How is, how is free carts gonna cost us two million dollars of potential home upgrades or, or whatever we?
I'll discuss that later, I think.
Yeah, I just. You know, like I said, Priority Waste is doing a phenomenal job, and I have no complaints with you, I have complaints with the numbers of how we're gonna pay for it.
Oh, I, I understand.
No, I'm speaking to the, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking to the gentleman guy, because he's been here several meetings and, um, I don't want to be wasting your time, and it's, it's not, this, this, honestly, this resolution and this stuff has nothing to do, in my perspective, uh, Priority Waste, it's, one, how are we gonna pay for it? And two, why are we doing a, a potential, once, nine-year upgrade or extension to get recycling carts? Because it's a four-year and an additional five years, why do we have to tie the city down for up to nine years to get a hundred dollar recycling cart? It doesn't make sense to be out, make, like, in the words of Mr. Murphy, make it make sense. And to, uh, Mr. Buma, who come out and stated that he wants to outsource it and not provide, whether or not it's cost effective or not, that he wants to outsource it and not secure and give more union jobs, that is troubling as hell.
What he got his contract.
That, I don't understand how, how that, uh, agreement to come out with that statement. It is very, very, how you wanna, uh, tell your union members that it's good to outsource and not expand the union? And if, I, I'll never, I'll never understand that, um, I, my grandmother, who worked for sixteen hundred, would be rolling over
Yes.
if she knew that. Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Carter.
Okay, I had been saying, six years, an extension of six years, being, being confined to, to a contract with priority for six years, but you're saying it's nine years through you, Madam Chair, to Councilman Piper?
Well, the, the, the most are the current, this is for till the end of this is a year twenty-eight.
Right.
And then it has an additional to, this is a year thirty-three.
Oh, no, 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 I don't, I don't think it's, it's above.
This is.
This is a distraction, it's very good.
Come on, this, Vanessa Palat. Um, to, to nine years? Nine years? No. Yeah, but I, but I'll put it up for bid, no. We need the bidding process, that, that, that ensures that we get fair, um, competitive prices. Yeah, I, um, I don't know, and then, and then we don't have the information that my colleagues asked for.
Over and over again.
Over and over, it's almost like, okay, and, and I, I just wanna say, Priority, you're doing a great job, but, yeah, I mean, and you, you were not the lowest bid anyway, initially from the beginning. So, I'm just having some issues with this whole, um, this whole, um, resolution. I'll, I'll, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any other discussion in the first round? Madam, just go ahead, thank you. Um, it's almost like a fire squad, but let me begin by saying, Priority, you are doing a great job. You are, and so no one's gonna dispute the quality of service that you're serving the residents this season. And, and so, I appreciate that. So here's a couple things, when I'm listening to what my colleagues are saying, one with administration, if you want to be part of going with this process, please get the council members, Council Murphy, Councilman Piper, what they're asking for, cause the administration department, you have not given it to them, you're holding the process up, to push out the soul fire here, they can't get it, that's not fair to council. It's not fair to council for, and what is your name? I was gonna call you Mr. Frank Warren.
Dan.
Dan, Dan, I, I know you've traveled here, um, several times, and that you've been here, it's not fair of you. They've been asking, my colleagues, for specific things, administration needs to give it to them, so we can make a decision. Now, on this letter, the recycling partnership, and the importance, the importance of it, which states the grant package, does not require us to implement to select any particular hauler or car manufacturing factory. This agreement must be completed by November thirty, two thousand twenty-three, and no, with service to the public to begin no later than the middle of two thousand twenty-four. Your service is good, it's great, and so that, that is a plus, I, I, I'm listening to understand about being, you know, being competitive, and they're supposed to answer that, and Councilman Piper raised a very legitimate question, which is mine too. If it's such a good question, and Mr. Moore was new, stating that, and he's gonna explain all that in his presentation, why are we using two million of ARPA to make this a great deal? And so it, it doesn't look like a great deal, nothing Councilman, uh, Mr. Murphy was saying, well, what's that, nothing is free, we, it's always something, isn't it, if, if it's free? So that, that is a concern, especially when you're trying to get residents, we get residents five, we're giving five million, we're giving two million to a, a company, you know, for a contract, so that's really not sitting well. One thing I, I will say, Mayor Neely has really pushed this, and he said to my colleagues, watch how they vote, just at a meeting on Monday, watch how they vote, and he wants us to send stuff up and, and not ask questions, it's not fair to us, it's not fair. We have a right and we're supposed to vet the process, and so if you keep coming, we just need several things, this should have been done. I had a whole conversation before you were here, Mr. Moore, as our sixth or seventh CFO, you are. It may be number seven, because you weren't the pick, it was a guy ahead of you, that's in between you and Jane, that didn't show up to work. And so, that's why I, 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 I will put you on the spot, but I had a conversation with Jane, and Jane told me it was a very good deal. So, everyone goes through their process a little different, and it's relying you in, Priority, I'm right? So as much as Mayor Neely thought he knew my process, and, and I'm talking, and talked about my kids, I'm still a little ticked about that. It has nothing to do with the business and the job that you're doing, it just speaks to his lack of character. Because he didn't know in the meeting what I had talked, this is the first time I told anybody out loud that, you know, Jane did tell me, our former CFO, number five, our fifth CFO, had approved it, saying, try and take a deal, cause you're blocking in that price. But my colleagues have a right to get the other things that they want, and they have not received that. So as he held up this process at a community meeting, and said all kind of crazy things and lies at this community meeting, he made sure, I think, now, you know, one of his, watch how they vote, if they're gonna support, he didn't even know I had talked with her about this a long time ago. I actually, I, I want my colleagues to make a final decision to get what they need, because we need to figure out how we're paying for that. And one thing, when it's got down, is a problem with our mayor, he was going to learn how to roll back, cause he, he wouldn't believe him. This is the business for me, but what he's doing is to shake business, and he needs to stop, he needs to stop. And Mr. Moore, I know it's gonna add up for to your presentation, because we need to know, we are getting ready to wind down, and so I'm gonna leave it right there, we'll be two rounds, right? And I'll come back, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, any other discussion? Seeing none, um, I'm the last one to speak, um, in the first round, that's correct, Mrs. May. I always say, any other discussion, I don't necessarily add in the first round, although that's what I mean. So, in regard, I actually spoke to Mr. Kim about really the contract extensions, and any extension has to come before council to approve. So, um, the additional years we have to prove, or whoever our follower, our predecessors are. Anyways, um, so, we're not blocking them in, it's, it's saying, hey, if you extend it, this is what the price is going to be. Um, so, but my concern is this two million in ARPA, and, um, Mr. Edwards, can you address why that two million dollars was in that omnibus bill that we take, that we tabled in definite, or definitely, or in double dollars? Um, last week, or.
The issue with the, uh, the trash lines, uh, is when the budget was prepared, they assumed that a hundred percent of the people that were billed for trash were paying, the way it works, and I think you probably all know this, is that, uh, it's all the tax bill, um, at the end of the year, we sell it from the county, and they pass a hundred percent, they then try to collect it after three years, if they ever collect it, then they charge us back for the amount that we have received, that charge back was not built into the budget. And, uh, as long as that's not built into the budget, we're gonna, uh, have a, a loss on your, your fund every year. Uh, the, the difference between, uh, recognizing what we have running now, it'd give roughly eighty cents a month for residents, if you wanna, you know, a rough number.
So we're using ARPA, or trying, we, the mayor wants to use ARPA to balance this fund?
Right.
He's spinning that up.
I have a problem with that, Major. Um, that has never been communicated to me, as the fondest chair, I know it's not your responsibility, you know, and, um, in my discussions with Jane regarding the garbage fund, that was never communicated to me. Um, I have talked with Heather and said, we knew that this garbage contract was gonna cost us more this year, we didn't raise the rates, and that would bite all of council, as well as the administration. Because that wasn't, because we should have raised the charge for garbage this year, and we didn't. That's not something that is something that residents want to hear, but it costs us more money this year, and we had to collect that money somehow. And it is on the backs of the residents, unfortunately, but the residents are watching getting the benefit, and, um, so, I have a problem with that, but I wanna make a motion that we table this resolution until after the presentation, and I surrender. It's been lifted properly, seconded to table this resolution until after the presentation. Mrs. May? Yes, give me a second please to write this up, and then I'm last for discussion. Okay, discussion, Mr. May, do you?
Yeah, Madam Chair, for that day, when we come back to a deal on the second round, if I'm not mistaken, but.
Correct.
You know, I got a problem with you, better than Sam Buma saying that, and I got a problem with Sam Buma standing with management as a union person, I'll sit here, that's just me, and so I wish he was here, and I would have that all with you. Because, see, I know from my knowledge of garbage contracts, they can be very lucrative for politicians. Now, I didn't say illegal, I said lucrative, because I've seen garbage contractors and people associated with donor votes campaigns. And it might be with this donation, but it's reasons that certain folks are motivated to do business with certain folks. And so I know Sam Buma plays around in the political arena with candidates and folks as well. And this concerns me as a union person. Not only do it concern me because it's no facts and figures there, but he alludes to them in that letter. And we've been talking about it worldwide. I'm gonna vote to hear the presentation, but I hope that this presentation don't have the same time constraints on it. If so, then it's council rules, if so, I would attempt to loosen up the time on it. Because I don't appreciate no politician, in this case, nearly, standing on ABC twelve talking about what we need to do and when we need to do it. I don't play the game, and I can prove it better than I can talk about it. And then union folks standing with it, trying to put pressure on us. I don't play the pressure back, I play just the opposite. I have no problem with approving the grant, I do have a problem with giving five-year options. I do have a problem with more than a two-year extension from the original contract. Because remember, I had an investigative hearing with Green provides for priority, and I caught folks lying, including the mayor during that investigative hearing. And Mike Brown was scared for his job. So I know politics and garbage just as good as some folks, and it won't be no games played with men.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. May. Mrs. Piper. So close.
Restriction.
So close.
Restrict. Um, my question, Dan, I don't have your last name, I said Dan. Dan, um, I'm going to ask you a few questions, because I, um, I did my homework, so, Dan? I'm sorry?
Vanette.
Vanette?
Yes, sir, Vanette.
Okay. Mr. Vanette, this is roughly, if I'm not mistaken, it's sixteen and some change per unit, is that correct?
Sixteen forty-five, uh, this year, which is a current contract year, and this four-year additional, so it's really, if we look at it, a four-year extension of the current.
Understood, understood, so it's roughly, uh, four dollars and, uh, I don't know, what would say, say four ten to be, so the tax is taken?
Sure.
Four dollars and ten cents. So, you, uh, Priority Waste, I'm trying to do this in two minutes, uh, Priority Waste submitted a bid in East Point to include recycling, uh, garbage, um, for three ten to be, can you tell me the difference?
Yeah, there's a significant change, or significant restriction on the service in East Point, one is it's cart-only material, so.
So, so, they're paying less for carts?
No, they're, they're, they're paying for a carted service they already own, and we didn't have to provide any carts. But we only service the cart that's currently at the house, so we don't pick up anything that may be outside of the cart.
So if we bought carts, we could get three ten to be?
If you own one bulk item limited per week, we could probably do better than what we're doing at sixteen forty-five. But with the city of Flint currently, uh, you, we are a little bit more, um, generous with bulky waste. Whatever you put out, when it comes to bulky waste, as long as it's properly prepared, bag, we take. So a house that we walk up to with twenty bags on the street, we will take it, we would not do that in East Point. Additionally, waste cost in Macomb County is thirty to forty percent cheaper, at the landfills and transfer stations, it's a more competitive market than it is up here in Tennessee County, and Tennessee County also taxes us on top of that for the, uh, waste material that's generated by cubic yard for all three screens. So it's, it's not an apples and apples comparison, it's an apples and orange, if you wanted a more restrictive bid, or a service, which was a big, uh, talking point in the bid buyer, I don't want limits on my bulk, I don't want limits on my bags, the, the price is gonna be higher for that, higher expectation of service offering.
Understood, um, this is one hour, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Madam Chair, I'm gonna make amended motion, um, that we, because you, you moved to table this until after that, I wanna make amended motion to bring that forward, cause you never brought it forward. So we would have to deal with the company, or the, the business beforehand, I wanna bring that forward and have that now.
Fine.
And I surrender.
So a motion to bring presentation, motion to bring the presentation. So a motion to bring presentation, motion to bring the presentation to now and table this discussion until after the discussion? Or, we're just getting clarification, just a second?
Yeah, because your motion was to table this until after the discussion. So we have to deal with everything else, so I want to bring that discussion to have to be heard again.
All right, and it's been moved and seconded by Ms. Burns. Okay, I gotta figure out how this, how this is done. When we bring it forward, Madam Clerk, how many minutes and how many rounds for bringing something forward? That's not in the rules.
This is a standard motion, it should be two rounds of five.
Two rounds of five, yeah.
Two rounds of five. See what I've done there, kids?
Mr. Pfeiffer, just say it.
So, Madam Chair, can I get the floor for this first round?
Chair?
Cool. So I guess my point is in bringing up East Point and seeing what you guys submitted there, if we are running a substantial deficit and if you look at the chart of our balance in that rubbish fund, as maybe to Mr. Moore, it's been up or left, down or right. We burned through two million dollars in the last few years. So why aren't we looking for cost-cutting measures to fix this deficit? Whether it be bulk item reduction, cart program, whatever it is, why aren't we looking at any kind of cost-cutting measures rather than just push forward and kick the can down the road? Because ARPA funds are going to run out.
Thank you.
And the ARPA funds will run out, by my projections, before the end of this extension, using the two million dollars at our current run rate. So why aren't we looking at everything on the table rather than just... Do you understand my question? I understand your question. I guess at this point, I have had a chance to look at everything. But if you haven't had a chance to look at it, why is this before us? It's tied along for four years.
Yes, he ain't gonna be there no more.
He just had to...
And you have to give, have to work with a hand at your belt.
He ain't gonna be there.
Yeah, but you better.
So we are always looking at the cost-cutting options, however...
So was any cost-cutting options discussed with Priority?
Yes.
And what were those as cost-cutting and what were the cost-cutting...
Well, it's not based on the current contract per se.
Right, because we still have one more year, Catherine.
Correct, yeah, we are in that third year. What, where the cost-cutting comes in is that the city of Flint, at one point during all the dynamics and court pieces and things that happen, it changed that like everything about it had to be picked up. Well, I mean, a governing body or a company purchased to come in and provide services, they don't always have the ability to do all that work or they're going to charge a higher amount to do that. So we've already done that cost-cutting by cutting back on what it is that was setting to occur. So when the numbers came in, they came in at a lower rate than what we anticipated.
But they didn't come in at a lower rate.
They did, they did. All the persons that provided a proposal, those rates came in based on that deduction of services that we requested. Because before that, we asked for much more service.
But if we look back to the bid process and that, and it was, this garbage contract was approved by the prior council, there was bids at twelve dollars per unit.
They weren't eligible, they were not...
They were not eligible.
They were not eligible for it, right.
Because they couldn't start when we wanted to start.
Correct, that's correct.
Well, we're not under those time constraints now, so why are we paying, no offense, Mr. Inglewood, why are we paying that twenty-five percent more increase when we're not under those time constraints now?
So, a personal question...
Because there were, there were some in the, like I said, in the twelve-dollar range and we went with Priority Waste because they could allegedly start when we needed it to start. Well, now we've moved past that.
What's your request?
Did you say a request, correct?
Correct, yes, sir. When they allegedly said that they could start and when they couldn't start. But we're not under those time constraints now and you're asking us to approve a four-year extension at the top of the escalator, the fee of the already escalated prices, because they couldn't allegedly start thirty days' window that we needed it to start. So explain that to me if you can.
So first and foremost, again, we're not looking at apples-to-apples. I know we can be using fruit as the factor to compare. Each of the parties that provided a proposal, for example, they're basing it on that sheet of paper that we should be able to take the sheet of paper, pronounce each other and look at one-one-one. That's not how those work. The proposals for the, for our trash, you have to look through the documents.
Is that, is that a deficiency that we need to work on in the purchasing so that we can get apples-to-apples?
On the thought of being disrespectful, I would have to say that the people in the garbage industry are crafty in doing their proposals. So we have to look for the things that are hidden and they weren't. Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? In the first round of this is the, of this amendment, correct? No, no, Mr. Mays, this is a motion to move the presentation forward. We have two rounds of five minutes. Is there any other discussion in the first round on this?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Mays?
So, if I'm not mistaken, then I could leave, you gave amended motion to postpone. And it was seconded by, by Miss Van Ness?
Uh, no, Miss, Miss Chat.
Okay, um, yours.
Right.
And that was to postpone until when?
Until after the presentation, but Mr. Pfeiffer made a motion to bring the presentation forward, the special order. So that's why we have two minutes, I mean, two rounds of five minutes.
Yeah, and I had to clear that up in my mind because I disappeared for a minute.
Point of origin, can we restart the clock?
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to suggest that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving the presentation forward. And I'm concerned because I want to know if there's certain time constraints. Do you know, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, if we proceed with the presentation, what's the time constraints out there, the time constraints?
There were no, no kind of time constraint placed down in the special order on the presentation. And so the only time...
So I'm going to support moving it forward and I'm going to be revising and dealing with the details because it's been highly publicized and criticized. And then when it comes to the council, in my own way, I'm going to protect this council against certain politicians. I'm going to do it the best I can, but I need the help of council. See, I've sat here during the investigative hearing, questioning other contractors, parents, about when they could start comparing apples-to-apples and oranges-to-oranges and apples-to-oranges and all of that. And to this day, I'm not satisfied with all the misinformation and lies that I heard during that investigation. As a matter of fact, I was appalled. I was appalled. And I believe that we spent three to nine million more than we needed to. And at that time, part of my interest was picking step up between the sad watching and the curb, where the people lived in that house and that. I'm not going to blow the whistle as it relates to raising priorities at this point because I know this republic can be ladderaded to their contract service for me that a little much. And so when people trying to get money over five to eight years, they know they better be on their best behavior.
That's right.
But I worry about it in the latter years. I also worry about putting step up for me. And I don't like the politics folks play and have played with garbage contracts. No difference in the politics with American Tech with this address. I see Mo Gerns and Council B today, who not having ten years of... With all of that Channel 12 publicity about American Tech. We got no need to use the word Channel 12. And I'm knowing the politics that Ms. Liddell Lewis played. Now, I'm hearing, she told the media, just talk to her. Where you going to talk to her for that she ain't here? Hug ain't for people, where they got the worst attendance record and they listening to hug immediately. But we got to do the heavy lifting. We got to do the work. That don't even make sense to me in a community. Why would you talk and interview folks who ain't here? He ain't here and she ain't here. Oh, well, maybe their voice ain't as deep as mine, but I'm here. I'm going to listen to your presentation, I'm going to get all the details, Heather. I'm going to get all the details of the Mr. Moore and you're here for Priority, right? Look like we putting the hammer on. And ain't no politicians don't pressure me between now and the end of October or November. He on TV talking about October and the documents telling me November. What's with that, by October, November?
The letter says November.
You ever heard of Pinocchio? Yeah, time Pinocchio told a lie, he knows.
He walked right into that.
We got to put this big act with Pinocchio, big, spread your eyes across the city of Flint.
CFO.
But the numbers ain't wrong.
About to be gone.
We're going to hit the bottom of this, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, any other discussion in the first round?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Um, so, I got an email, and you got what I, um, my company's... Bless you. I'm going to be watching the presentation live on, um, firsthand.
Of me?
Eighteen.
Either we probably move this to special affairs or money or council, depending on how my company is built, because you know, we need fiber. And then I'll make my decision based on the information we get on the, how much the property taxes going to get raised. I just read a letter from Councilman Mays that found we were putting this email about the in-house, why they don't want to go with bringing that in-house. Then my last piece is a, that's a big one, is why are we putting it up to be versus, um, just going with the contract? So other than that priority, you guys are doing a good job, I have no problem. Then we have talked on the phone and I had issues and you guys have resolved it. But the big issue is what increase in taxes for the residents? How much, I'm not sure about the two million dollars of the ARPA funding. When you got people asking for twenty million dollars for home repair.
Thank you.
We shouldn't be using ARPA dollars to...
Thank you, question.
To get the gap of, so far of revenue loss or whatever going on in Dr. Star. I'm not sure on what that piece like that, you know, I want to say something.
I will, I'm hoping I can remember everything that everyone's saying, so I can respond. For you specifically though, to answer the question about ARPA, I wasn't familiar with that in place in the area until you guys started this discussion. I was a little aware of what I've been sharing through the last couple of meetings, which was either a hundred percent of people need to pay, so it keeps us in line. General fund has always been a supplemental opportunity as well. And then the money that, I remember the, it's tax deduction, something that comes from the county at the end of the year from permits and things that they get fees from and that are reallocated actually to the community. So those, those are the ones I was aware of that helped supplement. You had brought up about the in-house, I know it's very, very passionate about that. I know that also, our councilperson, Mr. Pfeiffer here, he also had that same request. We did have a third party, it's actually an intern from MSU that has been doing the work through another accounting person. The thing that she pulled together is just starting with the trucks, for example. I know it was brought up, I believe Mays said that let's just get five trucks. They're running twenty-two right now. So, and we, we had at least that when we were running them here in the city ourselves. Those are going to be out anywhere from eighteen months to maybe twenty-four before they'd be even able to come in and that's if you purchase it. The starting rate of those trucks are going to be right around three hundred thousand and I'm, I don't have a paper in front of me. It was just, it was just an email, a little bit of information is what it was. And that's why we have a little bit to give you. So just the trucks alone, that's why Sam Moomer had wrote that letter and that's why he was in support. He, in that letter, he says that he wants to deliver an in-house. He's here to work as a union, I'm under union. I obviously want the money to stay here for my people. The thing is, all of the money that I've been talking about, just to buy the trucks, it's not including being able to raise the pay scale because the overall pay scale is around seventeen. The going right now is twenty-two, twenty-four and that's if they have C D L. We can't get enough people to do C D L, we're short in literally every department and Department of Public Works. We do not have enough C D L holders. How are we going to get potentially twenty-two people to come in and assist in in-house? So it takes time and that's what Sam was trying to say, that it takes time. His idea is why we do that, get the car system in place because the state and federal government are asking that we become more conscientious consumers by recycling and they do have expectations over the course of certain years. So I know twenty-twenty-eight is the first year that the state is asking that each municipality and county have a certain percentage of clean recycling opportunities. So that is something where Sam's going, he's saying, "Let's just get started and then go from there."
Any other discussion going in this room?
True.
Um, Heather?
So I wasn't getting you guys on the phone too far. I just want to say this, you see how great this meeting has gone? It's great to be now, it's great to be now.
Break out.
So this has been a good meeting, so we've been a lot of questions and I just want to highlight that. So C D L is a problem, I don't know why they have to get with the police and what issue it works. To do something that going to set up a hire and we don't want us, not even with the police department because the DPW department and all of them throughout the city, you won't get the C D L. But if you offer a bonus like we did with the police department, that is an incentive to get more drivers. Instead, let's just always chuck in it and saying, "You know, we can't get enough." We got, I think, getting more ideas, you know, things that do work. But Priority is doing a good job. So one thing, Mr. Moore, how long is your presentation?
I'm guessing five to ten minutes.
Okay, you have six slides?
Uh, more than.
He looks like he's...
How's the word? He looks like it's going to be twenty minutes.
So, the concern with these, so we had four-point-three million dollars in grants and then we spent two million of our higher goals to balance that. And I'm looking forward to the presentation. And so here's one question, some people have more than, I mean, I've had these, those trash cans living in Country Club Hill, Chicago. And the trash cans, what if you need more, and some of them need more than one? Because the issue, what people, they go to is having, it is a one-person truck that used to come and that gave lifts up that trash can. And I can't even remember, I only had one trash can, my... And I can't even remember. I only had one trash can at my time. I spent at my house in Illinois. I didn't have a lot of trash. Cause I wasn't there a lot. So. Can they get a second can? I mean, how many cans do people live at, too?
Right hand.
Yes.
So with the current budgeting, they would be allowed one of each, a trash can recycling. There are opportunities to purchase one that they wanted to and/or they could use their other trash cans. So they're not obligated to go to the cart, although that's what would encourage them to, especially with recycling program. Once you can get people understanding how easy it is to recycling, a lot less of it goes to the trash. So it kinda evens out once we're all into it.
Yeah, we recycle now. We, I mean, we're already recycling. We're not new to recycling. I mean, I get it.
But if it's not done right.
Well, I.
Then it's a little beast.
Yeah, and, and I get, but if you put a recycling to the curb, they pick it up. I mean, it's just the container we're talking about that they gonna pick it up in. Whether you're picking it up in, in one of the blue ones, some of these are red ones, some degrees, some people have their own. You know, so it all depends. So, I mean, I, I look at how some of these deals be coming down to us and lobbyists. Work these great deals. There's a lot of lobbying that's, that's done. But this one, when we look at residents, we're saying it's being pitched that, okay, residents are gonna get these brick trash cans. Average family of four is not gonna have one trash can full of trash. They're just not. That's just not gonna happen. And so when we look at the cost of, that was one of my concerns. And in Illinois, you know what they did? They dropped off a trash can for free and they charged people. They dropped it off for free. So they would have, so it kept the community looking bigger. At curbside, you didn't have trash piled up and it, it just gave a greater appearance and it kept rodents down. We have cat, we have a cat issue here in Flint now, along with the groundhog and the raccoons. So we have, we have problems. That's all. I would like to see, I get one can for one family unless you're two people in a household, that you're really gonna use, you know, one of each. With the, with, when you are actually putting out your trash can when you're recycling. So how much do council cans, if they purchase, will they be?
Well, they're asking a question so we don't have all the expectations in place. So. If, not in regards to our program, but in general, depending on size, you're ranging anywhere from like seventy to maybe a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Um, that's if you're buying it straight out and that's not considering our program or what our intentions are.
Okay.
All right, any other? Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? There are none in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
I'm just remembering who you did to Mr. Moore. Is it Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore, listen to me close.
Yeah, I like him.
There's a category of RPA funds. That I know that be called lost revenue. Are you familiar with it?
Yes.
You can see Frank at your office right now, but. What's the amount of lost revenue possible money that your office have discussed?
I believe. At the table I had to ask, right now, I believe the, our revenue replacement is budgeted for like eighteen million dollars. Uh, but I, I had to check that to show you.
And, and the reason I ask that because when we start talking. We was talking between ten and thirty million. That was before you got.
Right.
Now I'm hearing you say eighteen million maybe.
Right.
Okay, and out of that eighteen million, that's where the two million in my mind would come from.
Right.
But my point is this. We need to do that budget. See, some folks on this council believe we've done a budget and this budget don't need amended. I don't know of no fiscal year budget that I've been there for ten years made amended. It's high time to amend RPA funds budget money. Because that just dropped. I'm calling it lost revenue. You call it what you want. That just dropped from thirty million to eighteen. That's a big drop. And in order for me to intelligently allocate money. Even in making up our sure cause. We headed into an audit.
Yes, sir.
And I know what audits look like. And I've seen councils. Who is responsible for the purse money. Bum with the ball. I don't wanna be on the council that bums the ball. Because I've been on the council that had to put airbag in the ball. Even as financial. Twelve million dollars that the city emergency managers had to get it back up to twenty-two million dollars. I call it a surplus. People call it burn value. I don't even look like nobody who understands municipal budget group. Don't answer that. I do understand.
I won't sell the short.
I do understand municipal budget. And I understand mayors. Finance directors. And council people. But the bug starts with the council when it comes to this purse money. And so when I hear all of this spending and maneuvering and folks saying that's what they. We should have quarter of a million.
I think it is.
It's the law. But this administration has bundled the ball in a number of places. Would you agree, Ms. Edwards? Even if it's a purse, even as I reverted quarter of the other day. But they wanna go on TV talking about this council. Guess who said on this council? Me. And when you talk about this council, that's the whole, that's what you tell me. Me. I ain't no standpoint. If a attorney general want to issue a warrant and prosecute somebody. You should have issued a warrant to this administration. Mr. Moore, you would be a community that you just got here today. Ain't brought me no quarter of the other day yet. Have you brought your quarter of the other day?
I actually have a map on the table of one month. You have a girl there.
I miss the mark.
Say that again.
He's only been here four and a half weeks.
I don't have to talk. I don't know what to say.
Mr. Moore has only been here about four and a half weeks. You have to give him like a month.
You don't wanna say you got one other day.
He won't be here for five. This is last week.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Moore, just point of information, is that the report that I've asked you to prepare, how, how I asked you to prepare?
Well, I, that's a separate report.
Okay, all right.
I have worked on and I, I do have a, a, a.
All right, I want to stand, Tyler. I want to stand.
Uh-oh.
Um. Yes, this is, this is your five minutes on the second round. Okay, go ahead.
I wanna ask a question. I'm not sure.
This is last week.
Priority or in-house buff program itself? Will the carts be in.
This will be. Everybody looked at me, so I'll take it. Uh, so every, every residence, the, the beautiful part about this program is that everybody is going to be eligible.
So does that mean they're out there?
Everybody is going to receive the trash card and recycling card. The recycling partnership's goal is to get a hundred percent participation out of these cards for the residents. Now, of course, there are special circumstances. And so we currently already do this in the city. For those that require assistance, legislative assistance. Where we provide a, a special service and Heather, a, a lot of those as we came into this contract and we make those accommodations. So there'd be the same level of, uh, there'd be a qualifier that comes through Heather's office that qualifies anybody that doesn't need that assistance. Um, and those carts would, would, would work through those, as some system, system, um, enhancements and, and, and glitches that would occur. So if there's somebody like my grandmother, for instance, that's eighty-seven years old, who can manage the cart, that's fine. But if she hit ninety and she couldn't, we would make those accommodations through the office of Heather.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, um, my time is limited on this one. So if it's going to be every, every resident is going to take them, are they gonna be serialized?
Yes, every cart is serialized and you can have them even depending. So I'm familiar with the R P processes with these carts and the recycling partnership have worked with them before. You can put that as the requirement that everything is recorded with the serial number to the address that gets.
So will the residents have to sign off if they receive said cart?
No, the delivery team that does it. And I'm speaking for the recycling partnership. Rob Taylor has worked with Heather and myself on this. When the delivery team that goes out, they document the address that the cart was delivered and the serial number on the cart.
So who, who would be responsible for the cart if that cart came up missing? And, and as we're saying, this is.
Yes, somebody can tell when we're ready to keep the program out, we're gonna have all of those information.
Well, I understand we have replacement carts, but who is going to pay for that cart? Because we all know carts are gonna come up missing. Um, it's the world we live in. So. Does that mean the residents are gonna have to out-of-pocket to get a cart to be back in compliance? So are they, are they opting in or not opting in, but they're gonna be liable or liable to then pay another hundred and twenty dollars to. Get their trash picked up if their cart gets stolen?
Every circumstance is gonna be different. So for example, if one gets damaged.
I understand that. I'm talking about this specific thing. So if, if we're not putting the liability in there, signing out and that they've got this cart. If one comes up missing, because I was talking about these three carts. And if somebody comes up and they have a cart missing and it's stolen, whatever the circumstance may be. Now it's no longer a free cart and they, in order to get their trash picked up, they gotta pay a hundred and twenty dollars. How is that?
A hundred and twenty.
So again, we already have a program written out to give you the definitive. My understanding of what we probably will do is if it isn't something accidental, we're gonna look at replacing that cart. Cause we have surplus.
Right, right. And somebody said, your, your, your press conference, you said you're gonna have three hundred extra. But, you know, I understand for repairs or maybe priorities handling for repairs if needed. I'm speaking that or I'm speaking now, you know, somebody takes it up north and now it's. It's using a different system. Who's paying for that?
Again, each circumstance is gonna be different. So if, if we can, if we have a justifiable vandalism type thing, we're gonna look at trying to support that resident to get a new one. We're not gonna say, oh, yeah, it's your fault. There are circumstances where, yeah, they wouldn't be responsible. They would have to pay the other one. If they maliciously did something that caused something to happen, then it would be a different circumstance.
We, we don't, if somebody, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking to him. I'm speaking specifically theft or misplacement or robbery on holiday. I'm not, it's pretty narrow what I'm doing. Who's going to pay for that? Is that going to be further, um. Taxpayer dollars that's gonna have to subsidize cart replacement each year? Is the residents gonna, that's my question.
So we have a couple of questions right now. To answer the one if it was stolen or that it was taken up north, that was an example up north. We would investigate. The neighbors tell each other. They'll tell us if, if someone took it from you from his son.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round?
I wanna hear from Michael Colion.
So are they not, through you two? So once you give them these carts and these recycling bins, are they not allowed to just use their own emphasis? They still can. So if it is stolen, if yours is stolen. Or damaged or whatever the case may be, they, they can still use their own if you will still pick them up, the trash up, correct?
Yeah, so in other communities that have a carted service, they use the one that's provided as their primary because that one's covered under a ten-year warranty. Uh, replacement parts and, and anything that needs to be maintained on it is covered under that. For families of, of larger, four or five that have, that need that secondary cart. They can place bags at the curb that are properly prepared and not stacked more than too high. Or they can use a secondary cart that they either bought from, uh, the inventory that will be left. Or something that they had stored already at their house. Uh, it works very well with, in those circumstances where like myself, uh, a family of three, I sometimes have a little bit of extra and I put my one bag next to my cart, no problem. Other communities where they have, like yours, it, uh, let's say it's a family of five or six, where they're predominantly using more than, need more than one cart. They can either use a second cart, buy a second cart from the city, from the inventory that you have or the program you want it defined as. And use that work. And like I said, just as we currently keep picking up bags at the curb, replace properly, out for collection.
And there's no way they don't have number bags, correct?
I think the number's twenty additional bags, which I don't, I don't see too many people having. I don't make the basis. On top of them, I'm saying twenty additional bags.
Okay, so, cause I just wanted to be clear. It just seems like the conversation we're having with my colleague, that it sounds like. If they use your cart, their garbage is not gonna be picked up. But the, so your cart disappears for whatever the reason. Their garbage will still be picked up if they decide to use a different bag or if they just set the trash on the curb, their normal trash bags about for kids.
Correct, but we, we wanna keep the service in the cart because the, the, the great benefit of the cart is, you know, number one. Fight any spreading of materials which turns into littering and a life problem. The second part of it is it keeps the rodents and the critters that get into it that, uh, Ms. Burns talked about earlier. It keeps that from, from getting in, spraying across the community as well. So we wanna keep the residents using the cart. So that's where that's second.
You have a creature-proof cart?
Sorry?
You have a creature-proof cart?
They're industrial size. I've, I've, I have one of my houses never had a squirrel or.
Your raccoons are persistent.
Yes, I mean, they are.
They, they are just as tough as we are. So if they want the trash, they'll get it. Right or anything?
Yeah, they're much better than any human I have seen from a local store. I just know that for a certain fact. Cause the bid that you will put out for these carts will require it to have certain classifications. That the carts that we buy at a local store don't quite meet and they're not required to.
Oh, good. You answered my question of they can still use a, a, another cart or put the trash out in bags. Is there anything else I have like a mandate that you feel the need to share that you feel is not being properly committed?
Um, there's actually a couple of different things. I'm not sure I can handle them all. Um, but going back to the carts, that program is gonna be defined. That will be brought back to you if, if this goes through. Um, I wanna stress that the carts are not really the main topic here. Our issue is actually for us to bring a cart program, moving the contract forward so we can have that done. I wanted to stress also that with this contract and I, I know. When we look at how it's written off, it's, it looks really wordy and it can be questionable. The current contract that we have with, with prior rates is three years and then two one-year extensions. What they're, we are in the third year right now. The rate we have is what they're suggesting is this third year will start this new process. So it'll be the third year, the two extension years at the same rate again of the third year. And so technically it's only two more years that we're asking for. Because we would have brought those two one-year each year back to you and asked for them to be accepted unless they're not doing something right. Stressing again that we, and we've said this from day one, if they are not keeping up to the standards of our expectations, they're out. And I've been telling you, there's other contracts I manage and I can't even actually terminate several of those contracts because they're not meeting expectations. So those are things that we definitely wanna throw out there as well. Um, looking at prices, I do encourage you to look around. I can give you numbers of what people are paying. I know they asked about East Point and about Sterling Heights. I, I actually have that. I can give you another information here. Give it to Dana.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In the second round, I've been having so bad. Any other discussion in the second round? Seeing none, roll call vote to have the presentation up to now. Ms. Shetland, so yes. Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Rayes?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, is there an answer?
Ms. Brusler? Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no? The vote is six yes, zero no, so we can go ahead and go into the presentation now.
It is going to take him to set up for a minute. Do you mind if I share some information that we started to talk about while he's setting up?
There's no timeline, so if this is part of the presentation, go ahead.
Yeah, so there was questions, and I understand, I, I understand where, um, everyone is coming from and they're asking questions, and we've been giving some verbal information. Um, the last meeting we attended, it was brought up about the East Point, and, um, then later on, it also brought to me about Sterling Heights. So those two areas are actually, um, contracts that Priority Ways holds. So I did meet with Priority Ways to ask them to tell me exactly what their program looks like. Um, there were questions about how do we, you know, why are they getting funding rates as opposed to what the rates that we're paying? And there's so much difference in the amount of population that's actually receiving it in each of those municipalities. So for example, East Point, um, they have right around thirteen thousand, um, units that are being serviced. Our units are going to be closer to forty thousand. So right there, there's going to be a price increase just because of the activity of servicing those. Um, their carts are owned, um, by the municipality, and Priority Ways has no contractual obligation to do anything with those carts other than empty them. Their DPDW or whoever department manages it, um, takes care of all their carts, maintenance, replacements, and so, so forth. Um, their houses or their lots are only sixty-foot lots, every lot is sixty-foot. So they have very minimal places to go to get it covered. And again, at thirteen thousand, um, locations or stops, it's, they can do it much faster than they can do it here. Um, tonnage wise, very different as well. There are, um, they have no educational components. Um, our, our recycling partnership and part of Eagle Funds will actually pay for us to mail things and send things out and keep with the initiative of giving information about recycling up to our residents. Um, there are different regulations on like the contaminations, there are, I think he already shared, even they have the thirty percent lower disposal cost, um, based on what Johnson County, uh, fees are and what county fees are down there. And then, um, so to summarize, um, specifically East Point, um, smaller lots, smaller city square mileage, um, faster service, lower cost for transport disposal, it's a cart-only program, and longer contract, they have a ten-year contract. So their average cost over the course of those years are? Fifteen thirty-nine. Fifteen thirty-nine is going to be their average cost over the ten years. So, sorry, I think he's writing, so.
Yeah, um, this program looks three parts, one is a, two parts of which have already, uh, occurred. A grant from, uh, Eagle and a grant from the recycling partnership. Both of those have time constraints that in order to get up, we really have to use the existing vendor in order to go forward with it. I'm going to review the current service levels, the proposed service levels, talk about the three parts, social if you've already talked about, and then at the end, financial impact. The current system is to go, we take bags and cans, uh, most of them, we take anything that's up the curb. Recycling is available, but you have to find your own container, provide yard waste, if it's properly prepared, in the bundles and make sure that the clinks are no more than two inches in diameter. And we also tend more than one large item. Out of the proposed plan, we still have the first three, the household trash, uh, the recycling yard waste, well, a lot of items. What we're going to be doing is adding the trash container for, uh, the household waste and a cart for the recycling bin. One of the other things that's added to this contract is there won't be no fuel surcharge, or we won't save freezing costs, we'll be freezing everything. Uh, the three parts about, there's about a million dollar grant from Eagle, the three point three million grant from recycling, you've already taken action on both of those. Uh, the next one is, uh, working with our contractor so that we can implement the programs. Last thing on this one, uh, the cost factors, we've talked, touched on this today. Uh, the landfill fees in Johnson County are more expensive than in our McComb or Coleman County. Uh, we also have, uh, county police head, we don't have in Coleman County. Uh, the on-site condition, bear in mind, is the distance to the landfill or recycling, there are recycling woods. Right now, we're at twice, that's a longer distance, longer distance, more time, each more dollars. Uh, when you're packing trash, uh, pick up, the big costs are probably two things. One, the time that they spend for, uh, at each house, and second, it's a lot of trash that they found, or they pick up at each house. Uh, if you have, uh, at the wholesale or posting, more compatible, plus time, plus travel time to clean. Uh, if they're more spread out, the option takes longer. The other one which we have in our contracts, we have some additional services we have. Uh, we get up to thirty, uh, dumpsters a year that are, we use, we can set around the community, fill it up, get rid of the light. Uh, that's a source that not out of most of the contracts. Uh, while we do have some yard waste limits, ours are very generous compared to a lot of the other communities. We also provide for a couple more weeks than some of the other communities do. One of the questions, and as, uh, Heather was talking about, is if we go to the cart program, uh, is paid for by the grant. Uh, there is, uh, there's been talks that, that's going to be either mandated or it's going to be mandated by the different vendors. Well, things will find that, and, uh, the trash business is a dangerous occupation. And I, I feel that if you look at the work conflicts, uh, you often find that your, uh, your trash crew has a higher work requirement than even the police officers have, so, uh, it is a dangerous occupation. One of the things about going through the, uh, the carts is you can prevent or reduce, uh, your work gun cost, which is why a number of the vendors are pulling it in on, moving for, uh, you have the carts. Some of the advantages of having a cart, it's easier for the residents to recycle or providing the cart for them. Uh, it's easier for residents to move the wheel, carts to curve. I know that, uh, last such year, I went from the fish with cans or the carts, unhingedable bath myself, because it's just a lot easier. Uh, so about the wildlife, I live in an area where there are lots and lots of raccoons, and I spoil them within my trees. Uh, but they've never been able to get them to, the carts would go somewhere for these. That's a, quite a big benefit. Also, these carts don't go away, I know what I had in cans, the winter times, you know, they were always going down the street and you had to find them. Uh, and which also produces the trash that point around and others, environmental effects. The carts are, uh, very heavy, they have high-quality materials, and the warranty on it is ten years. I've been using mine for six years and, um, I'm sure it's going to last at least another six years, they're just very good carts. Uh, the rates will be frozen, uh, for five, five years at the same rate. Uh, at the end, the city of Flint will own the carts. Uh, the other thing which, uh, will happen with the program is, uh, Priority has agreed to maintain the carts, uh, which means the wheels, the lids, the handles, if they break, they'll take care of it. They also will collect the carts, they'll distribute the carts. Uh, and if we don't have a program like this, we might have to do that ourselves and, uh, possibly destroy the, uh, the carts can be, uh, problematic space. Um, in terms of the financial picture. Space. Terms of the financial picture. Or positive, uh, keep the rates frozen for our residents for two years, using the ARPA funds. Uh, as you can see, uh, the budget that was prepared in twenty twenty-four, uh, we originally had a forecast for a higher level of revenue, but we've actually, it has been built up, and we've also reduced by, what we, the staff, for, uh, the carts back in county, uh, for the, for prior years, uh, collecting taxes. Uh, the wages are, we know, the contractor, the cost that's, uh, up here is, that's come up that we're being charged. Our budget will be, budget for a little bit higher. Uh, there are some other costs there, uh, you know, there's a number of items that are put in that, some, there's a whiteboard, but there's a lot of cost related to the city. With the ARPA funds, and if we just, this number just assuming the budget for the other costs and wages, uh, that would still show a loss of, uh, eleven thousand dollars. However, the other, let's bear in mind, this step, this is early on in the program, there's a chance that we can recoup that. Forecast for venture, I did show some increased costs, which would, uh, show a loss of, uh, twenty eight thousand. Again, we had, we started talking about the budget and the ready options that we have to reduce it, so I want to, the twenty eight thousand dollars doesn't fight me because we're so early in the budget process, I think we can recover for that. And that's essentially. That's a little effort. What's next, uh, we need to have, uh, the extension of, with Priority approved. We need to do that in order to get the carts ordered, which, uh, will probably take about eight months for those delivered. We need to find a manufacturer that, uh, they distribute, and would able to distribute carts to our community. What I think was already asked, what happens if the garbage, if it doesn't tip the carts? Uh, can I put, do you put the bags outside the cart? The answer is yes. Uh, as long as, you know, prop the bag, you, you don't have things like tires, uh, you know, they'll pick up things. Uh, I know that from my own personal experiences, the cart's large enough that I rarely have things outside of the cart. It's just figured out the handles and. A lot more to turn about, that the carts are rather fragile, where they crack, break, or get damaged. Uh, and most carts are very long-lasting, we have ten-year warranty on them. Uh, if they do get damaged, they'll, uh, be repaired, spent. Uh, but my personal experiences, they're very, they're very sturdy carts, I, I couldn't, I couldn't press, I really didn't expect that.
That's it.
So, I'm really glad, because I know, yeah, I'm always with questions, and I'm not really worried on my toes, and I don't know what the questions might be. I did want to bring one more thing to you when you're talking about that. I project that the issues with that are really going to be around a landlord, a landlord home, um, something that's a rental. Because a lot of the rental persons that are not responsible parties, who do get either evicted or leave without, they may try to keep a cart with them. So I have started that conversation with, um, the Johnson Landlord Association, um, I tried going there twice a year. And I did bring it up the last time I was there, would you be interested in carts, how you feel about that? And would you be willing to monitor that cart to make sure that you were tenant and keep that? So I got this conversation started, and I really think if there is that, that's going to be made more on that. And since, um, only because we go to other communities and we see carts out that are not in our county there. Um, I used to live in a area that had a Tera, and there were public carts sitting around. The only way that a public cart got there is they took it from another community, so, or they bought from the vendor and found a new location. So that's what I'm sure about the, um, it came to me after, because I apologize for that. Um, I did send the East Point Sterling Heights comparable information to Dana, unfortunately, she goes on, not sure she can print it for you right away, but it will be in your box, so you'll have the information that compares those two municipalities. And then, one other thing, um, I started to share as time went out, they have the, the communities that we're trying to look for are a lot of times around us, right? It's like, it's like when you have a family and why are we trying to get better things for myself? Um, so we're going to look around at the people around us as we look for they standing. Um, I can tell you, for example, the city of Fergie, they're pretty open on, you know, to find information about their program. Um, they are an all-male collection, but they do have all three, trash recycling and yard waste. They do have a longer contract, but they also have a rate that's lower than what we're paying currently, which is fourteen twenty-six. They also only have two thousand units, so that also makes a difference on when they up and how much we're struggling to get out. Again, when we put these out to bed, the person who's starting to sit in putting the proposal, they look at our tonnage, they want to know the tonages. So we can give them units, but the tonnage makes a big difference, especially if they're transported somewhere else, which we don't have one implant. So of course, it's going to be transported elsewhere. Um, City of Flushing is carted fifteen nineteen fifteen. Again, they only have around four thousand units, so they're paying more and they have less. So it also can be complicated because they got the cart program. Um, Brambling seventeen fifty, uh, Montrose sixteen ninety-eight, Fenton Township seventeen eighty, Mountmore sixteen seventy-nine, Davison seventeen thirty, McComb Township sixteen ninety. Those are all ones around us that we see, and those are their current rates. So I just had to throw that out to you, because I did hear who were to put this out to bed. And I can tell you right now, from meeting with the recycling partnership yesterday, um, they, one of their representatives actually flew in from North Carolina yesterday. Um, and he brought that letter, and he wanted to stress, um, they are not in pocket, they are not in funding, supporting, or even telling City of Atlanta that they need to keep Priority Ways, that's not their role. Their role is to help us manage the program and to have a successful deployment and usage and program for recycling in the city. The advantage is they're also bringing the support for, for being able to do trash cans, that's unheard of. They're a recycling company, that's what they do, they do not do trash. They've never given money for this, they are for us, because they feel the only way that we're going to have a successful program from their experience of working with municipalities, is that we bring a trash cart along with them. If not, people are not using recycling or trash can. So that's one of the reasons why they brought that forward, and they actually offered that, was something we were asking for. Um, what they said also is because they're, they're, they're at a, they're at a hard stop. We are done, that's where the November thirtieth date comes from. We have to have a plan in place and submitted to them before that date with that plan. What they told us yesterday was, unfortunately, if you're looking at putting it out to bed, we're looking at deployment in spring, summer of twenty twenty-four, it won't happen. Because our, our contractor will not be able to support that, and we won't have someone in place to get it. So that, that means that our program would stall, and we wouldn't be able to do the deployment. So that's where that card, when November thirtieth for them comes in, because their funders are, are starting to ask for the money back. And the other thing is for, um, Eagle, you know, yes, we got that contract signed, we're ready to go. Um, if this does fail, we do have to stop operating, and that's when that resolution, they get separated for the two funding sources and the trash component, because we understand and respect your thoughts on those resolutions, but that's the reason why that contingency is in there, because we don't, we will not have time to put out for that, that's what you're looking to do. Um, we respect that, I understand that, but just understand that that would mean this program is done, and we would have to decline the funding sources.
Go ahead, Ms. May.
Yeah, I have a, um, this original contract was signed in what, two thousand twenty-one? And it ended in what, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
Hey, family, y'all got to go to Eric May's, go over there to the Janky Paul, what's his name?
I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear you. The twenty-four, I didn't hear what you said about the twenty-four.
Beg your pardon?